Okay, welcome to Budget Workshop number two. We're still working on Draft One, so we must keep in mind that we do not have our revenue projections in yet, and there's still lots of information that is not set in stone. So, we have not gotten a lot of our estimates and proposals yet from our professional service providers, also BOCs. We still have not received our increase from BOCs. So, our BOC's budget's going to be presented later on. I believe BOCs will present on March 20th. So, today, we're going to go through the insurance budget, just based on the information we have today, buildings and grounds, and our technology budget. For buildings and grounds and technology, you'll see the various areas, our salaries, equipment, contractual, materials, and supplies. I'm going to go through all the salary codes with you, and then we'll have Mr. Bramoff and Mr. Fisher, who will go through their equipment, contractual, and material and supply budgets with you. So, we're going to start with Mr. Fisher's budget, and he's going to talk a little bit about areas that have increased, areas that have decreased. I know that we're trying to all get used to this new format, so I just want to walk you through. The top of the slide is going to have your budget to actual, going back from, to 13-14. Then, you'll have your 16-17 budget here, which is the current year. In this expense column, this is what was expensed so far out of this code, and also any encumbrances, which means any contracts or bills we have outstanding. And then, this is what's left over right now in these various codes. These budget notes, is what I call them, directly relate to the item above it. So, this $10,000 for 16-17 current year is copier supplies, paper staples, $10,000. And then, you'll see proposed budget, $10,000, and you'll see the same description or the same note underneath because they didn't change. So, for all of the codes that do not show any changes, we'll just go through those really quickly, and then for any areas that do show a change, we'll go ahead and explain what that change is.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you. Good evening. You won't see a tremendous amount of changes in many of the codes, and as was pointed out, I'll just go into a little bit of detail about some of the ones where there was changes and why we had those changes. Just give me one second here. The first one is just a basic code, of course, you know, copier supplies for the district, that hasn't changed at all. Moving forward down to the, I'm sorry, I'm used to seeing the budget code here, it's the, okay. Yeah, so, moving down, that has stayed exactly the same, the conferences and the contractual professional development, there's been no increase in that.
I'm sorry, let me ask a question there. Does that line encompass teachers that need to go get trained?
No, that line encompasses contractual obligations on the part of the district for staff to be reimbursed for things that they're taking.
And that's only his department?
Right.
That's what I thought.
Just the technology department.
That's only his department.
Correct. Moving forward to the 1680-410 code, the contractual code, those are your run-of-the-mill recurring costs, you know, phone service, internet service, things of that nature. A lot of the recurring costs, school messenger is the district's website and notification system. The other items on there are warranties that we carry on some of the more expensive backend equipment and things of that nature. That's actually 2016. If you go down to 2017, 2018, one of the noticeable differences you'll see in the code is the district copier lease is no longer included in that code because we now own the copiers, we're no longer paying a lease on those, so that has been taken out. Additional things that were added this year that are relatively new would be the items towards the bottom. The VMware is virtual servers that we maintain in the district to allow us to have people access particular software that they need, but they don't necessarily access it on their own personal computer.
I'm sorry, Scott, what page is that on? Is that, this is three.
I'm sorry. I'm reading off of my thing, I apologize.
Okay, we're on this one.
Yes, this is the page, and I'm down towards the bottom, Chris. Okay, so, looking down there, the VMware, as I mentioned, so, for example, for Mac users that need to access Windows software, we use what's called VMware Virtual Ware. The Securly is the web filter that we use for all the internet traffic, and the NetApp is our storage area network, and that's just a support renewal so that in case we have a problem, we can get that resolved. Moving forward, the supplies line is pretty straightforward as well. We don't have any real increases to speak of here. I got to do this forward, I'm reading, that's why, thank you. Apologize. So, the supplies are staying the same. I think it was last year, we combined the individual lines of supplies into one general supply line for all of the buildings to make it a little bit easier to manage. In terms of software, that stayed the same as well. We don't have any major additions to that line. We have some non-instructional software that we need to maintain, as well as some non-instructional administrative software, which is part of the district's, the district-wide code. I'm sorry, I'm getting used to this new format myself.
I think it's hard to compare one year to another, one year to another. But, anyway, can I ask a question about this budget?
Yes, you can, certainly.
Does this budget include any new initiatives that the instructors may be wanting to do that has technology costs associated, or would that show up in their budget?
I'm going to say it depends. I did reach out to all of our instructional staff members prior to creating this budget, and anything that they've advised me of that they would like to see included, and I'll point out some specific items as we move forward, they've all been included. But, for the most part, we're in very good shape in terms of technology, and even the teachers are acknowledging that. You know, we have ample computers in most places, I'll explain one exception to that in a minute, but anything they have asked me for is included in here, and anything that wouldn't fall under my area would be in their own personal budget.
So, the savings is, we swapped out the copier leases, I assume we bought them out, right?
Correct, we own them.
And what do we put them, as a CapEx expense, one time only, and that's how we're saving 50 grand?
Well, yes, the $50,000 difference is mostly from that copier lease.
Right.
And, right now, we don't really see the need to renew or have another lease or get new copiers, our copiers seem to be working fine. So, when the time comes, we're going to have to budget for a new lease agreement or purchasing them outright, one or the other.
So, what did it turn out to be, a lease to own now?
Yeah, we basically made payments. Was it a five-year lease?
It was.
It was a five-year lease.
And we still maintain a service agreement on them, so the company still services them and provides all the materials.
But, we own them outright?
But, they're ours, correct.
I also handed out these sheets, and if you look on here, it's a 1680 technology. If you go through the codes, they're highlighted in yellow. This may be a little bit easier to make a comparison year to year, but overall, you know, this is 16-17 current year, this is 17-18 proposed, all of these items coincide to the items above them.
I like the color coded.
This is your difference, which is right here.
Okay.
These are all the 1680 codes he just presented, which is central data processing. Now, we're going to go into his instructional codes, and all of his instructional codes are coded 2630. So, if you go and look and flip over that 1680 sheet, you'll see all of his 2630s and all the detail of 2630 will be there, including all the salaries.
What page number are you on?
Six.
Six, okay, thank you very much.
So, if we start on page six, this is where we'll get into some of the detail about what we're doing in terms of.
No, I'm sorry, I was asking about, I thought she was referencing this.
Yeah, you're going to go with one, you're going to go with, it's actually the last page now, he's actually reviewing the last page, the 2630, 160.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
No. What's 160?
This, it's this, it's this here.
Oh, that's the salaries.
This one, because then it's easy to compare year to year this way.
That's the first line here, it's the salaries, but you're going to start with the.
So, I'm going with 201, right? Okay. So, on this nicely color-coded one, I'm referring to page six, and I'm starting with the 2630-201 code for instructional equipment. This is for the elementary school. As we've started a pattern of doing over the past few years, each year, we look to replace a portion of the teacher computer so that they're always current. So, that's what you've got budgeted in here, that really hasn't changed from last year to this year. Let me see what has changed. We had a couple of big projects in there last year, the gym screen and the projection system, that's been taken care of, obviously, this year, and the PA system, the last item from the 2016-17 budget will be taken care of during the April break. So, obviously, those are big numbers in the budget that will not be used again in that particular code. And the reason I'm saying that is that if you, well, let me keep going down this code, and then I'll explain what I'm talking about. So, and aside from laptops for teachers, of course, we just have a standard dollar amount that we put in there to cover the cost if we need to replace printers, some black and white, some color, and each year, at least some of the smart boards need to be replaced, and what we've been doing is we've been giving teachers an option of what type of an interactive system they want. Some of them are opting for an interactive flat-screen television where it's mostly where the teacher's at the board and the students are not interacting as much at the lower grade levels. Some of them are still opting, they prefer the interactive board where the students are actually coming up. So, the nice thing about the interactive flat-screens is we cut down on, say, we cut down on the cost, the recurring cost of bulbs, which is a very big expense, and the projector itself, obviously, because it's a built-in system all-in-one. The particular model we've gone with of late is also nice because it has a built-in operating system, and it's actually an Android operating system, but what that means is that the teacher technically doesn't have to even plug in a computer in order to get out on the internet, so they can do some basic tests without even turning on their computer, which is what some of them are really liking. So, we have the option in there to replace, as needed, some of the interactive systems in the classrooms at the elementary school. Now, as you move down to code 203, which is page seven, Jennifer, please.
So, just, it looks like, if we're not doing the PA system, it should be 25,000 less, right?
I'm about to explain that.
Okay.
This code, this is, this code from year to year is less by that amount?
Yeah, it's 54 and 118.
And the Chromebook spare, these are good things.
You've got, you're taking out the gym screens and projection system for 30,000.
Right.
You're taking out the PA system for 25,000.
Right.
And the Chromebooks loaners of 7,000, it looks like it's not part of this.
Right, we're in very good shape in terms of Chromebooks at the elementary school. Every classroom has a complete complement of Chromebooks to match the size of the class, and so, we're very fortunate there, and we do still have some that we use to replace when needed if they're broken or just as a loaner, so we're fine. We don't really need to do anything in terms of additional Chromebooks at the elementary school. The lab, we outfitted last year, so that's in very good shape, we don't need to touch that either. When it comes to the high school, in taking a look at the equipment here, this is where you're going to see those numbers are offset, because you are going to see large increases at the high school level, but there's a very specific reason for that. We are continuing, as we have in the past, with laptops for teachers, the same number of laptops we do each year, but you'll notice that the Chromebook cost at the high school is at $100,000. For that price, we're going to be purchasing 400 more Chromebooks for the high school. The principal has expressed his preference for having every classroom here also have Chromebooks available for the students. So, with that number of Chromebooks, and you'll notice at the bottom, the second number from the bottom is also a very large number for carts. Between the carts and the Chromebooks, we will be able to outfit every instructional classroom in the building with a class set of Chromebooks, so the students will be able to use them in every class. So, that's why you're seeing those numbers change.
Is a Chromebook cart.
Chromebook cart is what they're housed, and if you look behind you, over there on the wall, you will see the rack of Chromebooks in the very corner to the right of the door.
It's a storage unit to keep the Chromebooks in.
Right, but we're moving away from the racks, and we've, instead, we found a rolling cart that houses 12 at a time, so we'll have two of these small little box carts that actually can fit underneath a table, and they're fully charged while they're in there, and they're locking as well. So, the price for those is actually cheaper than it was for the carts, and we don't have to actually install anything or mount it on the wall, so we're saving a lot on that as well. Plus, it gives us the flexibility to move them around if we need to, so it's actually a good thing. And that last item on the list, you had asked about the instructional needs of the teachers, you'll see that Texas Instrument Inspire CX for the IB math program, that is something, as an example, that the IB math program is going to benefit from.
Is that a calculator?
It's actually a whole package that the teacher can communicate, it's a couple of different devices that the teacher can share information out to the students, and it's also interactive in terms of being on the web.
Can I interject to, I think one of the reasons that our high school, middle school, high school principal wants to move toward the Chromebooks in each classroom is many school districts use what they call the one-to-one computing, where the students take them home with them, bring them back, but the challenge is when they bring them home, they can get viruses, the children go places they won't, and the parents don't have the supervision necessarily, but by having a Chromebook in every single classroom, it is like having one-to-one computing, but we have all the control mechanisms. We keep the controls of the school district without those, the outliers that can happen when they leave the school building. So, it really gives a tremendous amount of leverage, technology-wise, for our school district, because Scott has the controls over them without leaving the building.
Yeah, it's worked out very well for us at the elementary school, because they stay in the classroom, the students, you know, they're numbered in each classroom, and technically the student knows, "I'm student six in the class," and they go grab iPad, I'm sorry, Chromebook six, but technically, they can use anyone, and we found that to be really beneficial. When one of, when there is a problem, in the rare instance that there is a problem with a Chromebook, it's wonderful because they can use any other Chromebook, they just log on and all their information is there because it's cloud-based. So, it's really worked out well for us, and here, we're looking to duplicate that model, and one of the things that we'll cut down on, not just leaving the building physically, but just carrying them back and forth to classes, which is from, what I'm hearing from colleagues, that's also a high time of risk and damage. So, they'll stay in the classroom, when the student goes from one classroom to the next, they won't have to take that with them, it's one less thing they need to carry, so.
Look at iPads as an alternative to Chromebooks?
We did, but there's some wonderful things about iPads, and there's some not-so-wonderful things about iPads. They're really, until very recently, they were not designed to be used by multiple people, they were really meant as an end-user consumer product, and we ran into challenges when we tried to have, as I just explained, if I walk up to the iPad and then somebody else does, it doesn't work as well. And the other advantage is, the students actually do have a preference for the keyboards as well, that come along with the Chromebooks. The touchscreen, even though they use it all day, it's not ideal for doing long-term projects or lengthy papers and things of that. But, we do have iPads in use in various programs. The lower-level grades over at the elementary school, they have class sets of iPads because for that age student, that's most appropriate. It's not until they get into the second grade that we introduce the Chromebooks.
Also, the Chromebooks are a lot more costly than a laptop, so.
Oh, much less.
Because there's a very big difference, so we can replace them much easier than laptops.
Right, the cost of the Chromebook is far less than that of a laptop computer, and even the repair costs on the Chromebook are much less. You know, we've had a few instances where we've had a cracked screen, but we can buy the parts ourselves, and the techs can swap out the screens in no time at all, and what's really nice about it is if there's a problem with the Chromebook, it's as simple as, you know, we put a USB key in the side of it, we hit reset, and with, literally, in five minutes, you've got essentially a brand-new Chromebook. So, it's worked out very well for us, and it, of course, the Chromebooks lend themselves to the Google apps, which we're, you know, using quite extensively at this point in the district.
Katie, can I ask a question? It's technology-related, but I think Katie would be the, maybe the one to answer it. You know, it's now required, basically, to have a PC or a PC-like device at home to be able to do your homework. In middle and high school now, it's built into most classes you have. Do we have any students who do not have access at home to their own technology and therefore are disadvantaged, and if so, how are we addressing that? I know that was one of the reasons why Southampton looked at supplying every student with it, because it felt like some students were disadvantaged by not having one at home.
And I thought that West Hampton, I could be wrong, supplies every student with an iPad.
No.
West Hampton Beach.
They actually get a, they actually get a MacBook.
A MacBook.
It's a full computer.
That's great.
They do. But, there's a whole arrangement there with the parents in terms of insurance and ownership and the damage issues that Katie spoke of that have to be accommodated for. To answer your question, since we rolled this out, I'm aware of three students that we've had an issue with that, we've made accommodations for those three students in terms of providing them with a Chromebook that they actually do take home with them.
So, if there's any student that doesn't have, isn't in a home environment that has the technology they need to do their schoolwork, the school district supplies them with what they need?
Right, but I want to be clear, that's on a case-by-case basis, and the need has been made very clear to the school, that it's not just a parent says it'd be great to have one, right. The challenge with that, though, the other side of that, is we have had a couple of students who have inquired about it, but when we explain to them in order for them to be able to use them, and that's, it's not limited to just a Chromebook, it would be any device, they need to have access to wireless in the home, to wireless internet, and that's been an issue for, I think, two students, as I recall. So, those students, we've directed them to go to the public library and explained to them that because everything we're doing is cloud-based, it's also ideal, because they can go onto any of the public library computers and access all of their work right there. So, but again, it's been, we're very fortunate in this district, it's only been.
And the students, most of the students prefer to stay after school, and there's been a couple instances where students have asked for a computer, and then when we check with the parents, the parents are like, "Oh, no, no, no." They don't, they, we have our computer, and it's right in the, where we can access it and we can see what they're doing, and parents want that control.
Yeah, and I've actually had a few parents approach me because they're buying their kids' Chromebooks for home, too, so they're not even buying their kids', you know, full-fledged laptops anymore. A few of the parents, especially over at the elementary school, have just gone out, and they said for the price of it, we just, they would just buy the Chromebook at home, and they're able to use it. So, it's actually worked out pretty well for us. So, that's why you'll see the big difference in the high school equipment. Yes, we did, you know, gain some back at the elementary level, but at the high school level, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to finish off what the kids have started, what we've started with the children over at the elementary school with every classroom. As we move forward, Jennifer, oh, you're already ahead of me, look at that, page eight. On the equipment side of things, this is mostly backend equipment that most people don't ever see, but you'll certainly feel the benefit of this. So, as we do every year, we put aside a certain amount of money for some of the larger-scale projects that we need to do, some of the backend hardware, switches, file service, things of that nature. If you'll recall, last year, we did purchase a second wireless controller system so that we had redundancy for the first system that we already had, and that worked out very well. But, this year, considering we're increasing the number of wireless systems significantly in this building alone by 400, I think it's beneficial for us to further improve upon that wireless system. We're going to be adding additional wireless access points to make sure that we have better connectivity in all locations throughout the building. We're in very good shape, but the newer wireless access points will be even better and make things faster, and this will also, to some extent, sort of lay the groundwork for any expansion we have to do to the new building once we start using that, because this will still remain the central hub for all of the activity, so that additional redundancy in the wireless controller system and the wireless access points that we remove here and replace, we will probably be able to use at the new facility. So, we're, which, as much as we're not rolling out a full-fledged plan for the new facility, we are looking ahead to make sure that whatever we're doing now will accommodate whatever we need to do in the future as well. Okay? As we move forward with the 2630 codes, the next one is just the contractual, which is really just recurring costs. So, again, I surveyed all the staff, I looked at some usage reports. If you move, Jennifer, you can just skip right to page 10, which shows this year, thank you. These are the various programs that the teachers have expressed an interest in, that we have, you know, subscription services or contracts to, if you will. We haven't had any real changes in these, that one in the middle, there's two that maybe we might want to re-code, but regardless, the BrightSign software is what controls the communication panels that we have around the building, and the Cyber Patriots is just that, it's registration for Cyber Patriots. But, as I look at this, we might talk about moving those into a different code. But, the rest of them are instructional-based technology programs that the staff has expressed an interest in and has demonstrated that they do use, so we are looking to renew everything we've had in the past. The one additional request that I did get from the instructional staff, again, is the math department, a lot of them are relying very heavily on this Math Excel program, it's something that they're using with more and more of the students, so that's why you'll see a large increase in this code, is because that is $4,500, but the feedback I receive from the teachers is that it is being used extensively, and they'd like to expand the use of it to additional students. Moving forward on to page 11, as we look at the supplies, again, these numbers are staying right in line with everything we've had, we haven't really had a need to change these. When we talk about supplies, we're talking about things such as ink, you know, projector bulbs, where we do need the mice keyboards, things of that nature, so we've stayed pretty stable in that regard. And then, we do have some other additional software, some large numbers for software that are the same as they were in the previous year. We need to buy licenses for things like the Adobe software that we use for the art program and the Microsoft products that we use as well, just things like, yes, even though we're Chromebooks and everything, we still use Microsoft Office in a lot of places, so. That takes care of the supplies, and actually, that's everything. So, if you look on the page 12, it's been broken out, I think it makes it pretty clear to see here, the 20, the total 17-18 budget is actually a reduction of $13,500 or a 2.13% decrease from the previous year.
Thank you.
Very well.
And just, you know, just because our revenue projections still are not in yet, if we do find that we need to start making cuts to this Draft One budget, then the two areas we may have to look at is maybe buying less Chromebooks.
Right.
And we may have to buy less access points, wireless access points. So, for Draft Two, if we find that we do have to make those reductions, we'll go over that with you, and then we'll show those reductions in the Draft Two budget, once we know how much revenue we're dealing with.
Yeah, I mean, the worst-case scenario, we would implement that program here over a two-year period as opposed to one. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any new academic programming or courses that are going to be, because I know we hear that piece of it after this?
That's Jeff.
No, I know that, but there may be technology associated with it, would that be in that budget? I'm just thinking, if there's any new coursework that has associated technology, is that going to be, are we going to hear about that when we hear about the coursework, or we would hear about that today?
I believe I would know about it already if there was a need for it. That's not to say there's not going to be new programs, but I have not heard anything that there's additional requirements, unless it is included in a local budget and it has been brought to my attention. But, I believe we do have the technology that we can run any of the courses that we need to. We already are running, I think you're talking specifically about programming courses and things like that.
I wasn't about techno, I'm just saying in general.
Oh, okay.
New, you know, we decide that our art department's going to be more tech-based, and so, we need X software or Y. I just didn't know if that, if there's new programming that then would feed into this. So, that's why I was just asking.
Right.
If you're aware of anything.
That's why I reached out to.
Leadership is pretty, it's pretty embedded already. I mean, we meet every single week at the cabinet, and I don't think there's a week that he isn't saying, "What do you need? What can I do? What can I be there for?"
Oh, I've noticed that.
Yeah, I've spoken with the art teachers, I've spoken with people, the ones that I know are the heavy users of unique technology, let's say, as opposed to run-of-the-mill, and from what I understand, we're, by that, for example, the Adobe, as I mentioned, that's something they use extensively. So, they've assured me that, you know, that software will work for what they need, and I think there is a, one additional package that we've included in there for the art room, for the art program. So, I think we have everything pretty well covered. Any other questions?
I want to thank Scott, does a remarkable job. I got to tell you, he's got a, he has built such team amongst his, amongst his team, there's so much team leadership, and they work so hard, and they do it with a smile, and they are constantly finding out what everyone needs, and he told a grade A anecdote at our cabinet meeting, where he put out to everyone, he's like, "What do you need?" And he said, there was not every year he gets this resounding, "We need this, we need that," and he said, this year, he didn't hear, and finally, that was it on his, in his, in his group, he says group, he never says, "I'm the boss," said, "Well, maybe we've actually started meeting all of their needs," you know, there wasn't this shrill, "I need this!" And it's because they're literally everywhere, and it's great. We've actually got a communication board over at the elementary school, too, but they really are getting the things they wanted, and we are fiercely into the 21st century here at Sayre Harbor Schools.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, but in all honesty, a big part of it is the staffing, we do have a great team, and what helps a lot is the fact that they are able to be responsive, because we do have the manpower to address it. So, when there is an issue that comes up, it's addressed, you know, almost immediately or very soon thereafter. So, I think that goes a long way, too, with the teaching staff, they don't feel like They don't feel like they're waiting around for something that, you know, may or may not ever happen. So that's helping a lot as well.
And one of the common instances, it is all data-driven because they have a ticketing system. Like Eric also has a ticketing system. So they can drive by data where, where their needs are and what is, you know, what's being broken, what's, what's working, you know? So they have a ticketing system that works through everything. Except for me, I just call and say I need help and I refuse to be part of the ticketing system. But it really all does get done and it's, it's, you can see it, the kids are utilizing it. They're leaving here with all those incredible hard and soft skills and our teachers are more and more getting on board with it. So thank you, Scott.
You have, just one comment about the, the ticketing system does help us day-to-day, but it also helps us identify trends. And, and that data is actually what's used to create this budget or to drive this budget. So that's why I'm making sure I include the need as an example for the interactive displays replacements, because that's what we're seeing starting to happen. They were purchased probably seven or more years ago, the, the original wave of smart boards. So that's where we're starting to see them happen recurring. So we made sure we put that, we put money into this budget to replace those based on the data that we were seeing.
Okay, so now we're going to start with Mr. Bramhoff's budget for buildings and grounds. And as I said earlier, we're going to talk about the salaries after his presentation. So if you go into the handout that I did give out with all of the detailed information, and if you just flipped page two, you'll see the 1620 codes. And we're going to start off with the equipment code, 1620-200. And he will show that this year, go ahead, you can continue.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. In regards to the 1620-200 code, we had a $2,500 reduction. This is mainly due to, we've been steadily upgrading equipment over the last couple of years, being a little bit more efficient. We're working smarter, not harder. You know, there's some examples of this with some of our new snow removal machines. They've taken away some of the backbreaking work and we've relied on, on the engine to do most of the work. But we purchased a new truck several years ago. So this year, the code, we were able to take out some of the replacement for the equipment.
So there is a decrease in this line. And you could see though, for the current year, there is $10,000 left in this line, which we are keeping there, just in case something does break down and just in case we have to make some sort of emergency purchase. And we will go ahead and reevaluate these needs going forward, of course, for draft two, if, if there are any reductions that need to be made.
Okay, moving into the 1620-400 code. We have a, it pretty much stayed very close across the board. We looked at each budget line and with the vendors that we're currently using and it stayed stable pretty much throughout. Moving into the 620-405 code, the architect, contract architectural code, that also stayed flat in regards to where we've been. We have not used a tremendous amount of it as of this year. Excuse me, we have $50 left, am I correct, Jennifer?
We actually have, no, for the current year, 1617.
Yes.
We haven't really, we haven't touched that line.
Yeah, so I'm reading it backwards, okay.
Most of it come out of the capital project budget. But going forward, if there are any additional fees we may need for any other projects, like looking at the building condition survey, then it would come out of that line.
Okay, on that page, you also have a picture of, this is the infamous switch. And I'll get into this in a couple of codes. But this is what switches our building from oil heat to gas heat. And that is mandated by National Grid. I've had several discussions with them where we'd like to be exclusively burning gas. But there are times when the need is to the point where they mandate us to switch over to oil heat. In this building, I would say, we operate 90% off of, of gas, and we'll get to that in a second. In the 420-411, as we get into the fuel codes, we reduced it by $10,000. And this was under exactly what I just said. We are, have a tendency in this, in our main building by burning, by burning gas more often. We are, we do have two new boilers online. They are oil-operated. And we did some assessments and budgeting off of what we had. And we, we feel that $65,000 would be a suitable number for that budget code. 1620-412 is our electricity. And that's, we had a reduction of $5,000. We do have more square footage. We gained approximately 17,000 square footage, square feet, excuse me, without the addition of the extra building. So the reason we were able to lower this budget code was, main thing is, the, the pumps that are operating in our district are a little bit more efficient after the bond project. So we're going to be using a little bit less electricity even though we have more space. And plus, we need to be conservative, yes.
The, since the renovation on Stella Maris won't start, you know, in the short term, because we need to get, you know, planned and built and it'll take a little while. So just operating that, adding the heat, the electricity, is that showing up in here?
Yes.
An additional expense, but it looks like it's going to be pretty flat from the year before, no?
Yes.
It's all built in. When you look at the actual expenses for all of these line items, they were much lower than what we originally budgeted. So that's why, taking into account the new building and looking at what we've actually spent compared to what we budgeted, we felt that these numbers, we were, we were comfortable going with these, with the, with, with the new building.
Right, because I'm looking at the, we're guessing, the expenses for our current year is $240,000 for electricity.
And that-
And we're proposing that next year it's $235,000.
No, that's not really accurate, that's expenses plus encumbrances. So basically, what happens is, in the beginning of the year, they, a purchase order is opened and a purchase order is actually opened for the full amount. But the full amount usually is not, and the reason why the purchase order is open for the full amount is because it helps with the payment process, that we don't have to do a new purchase order every single month. So every bill is paid off of that purchase order. So in reality, this two, the whole 240 is not going to be spent. It'll, it'll be less than 240. But for now, we set aside all of the 240 to pay for electricity. You'll see the year before, we budgeted 250 and we spent 212. But if you were to look back at this time, you would have saw that we encumbered the whole 250. So whatever's liquidated at the end is just, that's what's, that's what's done in the closing process in July and August.
And three years ago was 226, so you're comfortable that 235 will cover the additional building?
Yes, our costs in electricity have gone down.
That's it?
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. Moving on to the natural gas code, which is 413, we reduced this by $5,000. That was basically, on a three-year average, we've had a little bit warmer and we really haven't come close to that number if you look at the expenses over, you know?
This is the same thing, this is all encumbered money, but we're not necessarily going to spend 74 or 506 this year.
But we're saying that we just switched away from oil to gas, correct?
No, we've been doing that for quite some time. It's preferred that we use gas, but we, we, we run oil, excuse me, we run gas in this building predominantly all the time. We don't have that option in our other two buildings.
But eventually, that number should shift. Your, if you start primarily using gas, then your oil number should go down and your gas number start rising. A year from now, that should be an opposite trend, is what I'm saying.
That's if we go 100% gas in this building.
If they let us.
And the money is just going to get taken out of here and get put in there. So the overall budget is not going to see a huge change.
Eventually, though, the idea would be to reap some savings, significant savings that could be redirected to heating Stella Maris.
Oh, definitely. And when you see here, back in 1415, they budgeted $83,000. So we're already down 13,000, just in the gas line, going back from 1415.
Right, but if, if you added them both together, I'm just saying, eventually, if you add oil and gas together and you say, in a year, I spent 300 grand. Now, because gas is more efficient and I'm more reliant in the middle high school on gas, I saved 20 grand, I could throw that into Stella to offset whatever is in Stella.
Yes. That's if fuel prices stay stable.
And if we can, we don't control how much gas we can use. The, just a request, because the, the previous years when you did a budget, there was another column or explanation to things that might be teed up, that with the, with the current year's budget, where things are encumbered versus an actual expense, you may want to just have asterisks there and say encumbered, not actual. Because when people do go online, there aren't explanations for some of those variances and it might be confusing.
And I had the same argument presented to me today in the opposite direction.
But not to let people know that it's encumbered?
Not to include the expense column, to include all the encumbrances also in that column.
I'm not suggesting adding a column, just letting people know that, that when it says expenses, it's not actual, just encumbered. Or they may make the same, same mistake.
I definitely, I, I'm definitely going to work on that in the next presentation.
Sounds good.
Okay, we're going to move on to, we good?
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, 1620-414, cartage and sewage. We increased that slightly. We, mainly due to we're reorganizing our storage areas. Now that we have some new storage areas come online and we also have acquired some, some new items with the new building. So what we're doing is we're, we're really getting organized. So we're going to need an additional dumpster or two throughout the school year. Also in terms, also in terms of-
I love dumpsters.
Also in terms of sewage and sanitation, we've really dug into a deep district plan so that it's done, it's done on a regular basis, not just on a, on a, you know, annually. So we're really trying to stay ahead of that. 415 contractual water, this went up $1,000. We projected that we'll be using slightly more water on our playing surfaces, being that there'll be natural grass, so.
Nothing, go.
Got to water the field, okay? When we get to the 1620-416 alarm, contractual alarms code, Scott and I kind of worked together on this. Scott and his wonderful team have taken the lead with, throughout the bond process. So I'll let Scott answer the majority of the questions on why that, that budget code changed. So currently, we have, when we brought in the new camera system, the company that provides us with the new camera system also did door ajar alert systems. They also implemented carbon monoxide monitoring, water monitoring in our furnaces so that it detects a flood situation, temperature monitoring, so it detects freezing pipes or overheating locations. So it's a comprehensive monitoring solution offered by this company. At this moment, we are, we are using that company for all of that monitoring, as well as the burglar alarm systems. We're in the process of moving to them for the fire alarm systems as well, now that the work is, now that the construction has been completed downstairs and the fire system will go online without triggering any type of event. So as you go down through all the codes, you'll see that it's broken out into, you know, the burglar alarm, the fire alarm, the monthly monitoring for those two services. There's a service that they charge us for the lockdown, which means those blue buttons that we have around the building, the red buttons in the blue boxes and the blue lights on the outside of the building, that we can push those and those will initiate a lockdown sequence throughout the building. All of these items are being monitored. They're being monitored through a central support service that they refer to as their, their IAC, which is their, what did I say it was before? I forgot what I even called it myself. Hang on, I had it. Their incident awareness center, that's where they're, sorry about that. We actually have people watching our cameras 24 hours a day, looking for events. So I get notifications, middle of the night sometimes, we'll have a custodian who is here a little bit late and they'll send me photographs at 2:00 in the morning and say, is this okay? Or there's kids playing basketball one night, they'll, they'll snap photos and send it to us. So they're really staying on top of all of these different things. But that's why you're seeing some of these changes in prices. As we move to a new system, we're not just moving to a new system and replacing, you know, apples to apples. We're going from a current system to a much more expanded system and a much more comprehensive solution. Okay.
So this slide, mostly, there's really no changes on this slide. Everything is fairly staying stable. So we could probably, for snow removal, we have the same amount being budgeted for next year. The contractual clothing allowance, we're increasing that slightly and we'll go through that a little bit later, additional $250. And then also, the contractual emergency fund, that's code we're not using anymore.
Jennifer?
Yep.
With having an additional building, does that impact our snow removal and sand and salt costs?
It could, but if you look at what we've spent and how the line has gone, you know, really up and down throughout the years, we're hoping that if we do need additional money, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to reevaluate and do a budget transfer. But for now, we're going to just, we're going to leave that alone. We feel that this, this number, the 13,000 expense, like I said, that's also all encumbered. In reality, if you go to your sheet, the white sheet, if you look at 1620-417, you'll see that what we actually spent out of that line this year was nothing. So we encumbered the 13,000. We didn't spend any of it, so we think we'll be fine for next year.
Sounds good. Eric, did you have something to say?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. We always got to be prepared, so. All right, we're moving on to, Jennifer, how far did you go there?
We're going to go to custodial supplies and that's only increasing by $2,500. And it really just has to do with just needing a few, you know, dealing with any cost increases or needing additional items. So in total, his 1620 operations budget actually went down by $8,296. So now we're going to go to the maintenance budget and I'm trying to just speed things up a little bit, just because I know time is-
Yeah, we're getting time.
Yeah. We're going to go into the maintenance budget and right now, we have maintenance of plant equipment. And really, we have an increase in this line and it has to do with the middle school gym pads. And he came up with these really wonderful pictures to show you how, what poor shape they're in. But like I said, this is something that could be cut in draft two if we find that we really do need to make a lot of reductions under the tax cap. We may own, we may have to cut this in half and say, we can just do some of the pads this year and some of the pads next year. This is all of his contractual lines. And for the current year, you have $203,700, all included, each line item going way down. This, this operation of plant contractual for the current year, we're increasing by $10,550. And a lot of that does have to do with, we took some items out from the current year that we're not doing again next year. One of them, I believe, had to do with the, refinish the middle school gym floor, so that didn't have to get redone again. There were some items in here that we didn't have to redo, but what we added in was all of the BCS items that we felt could be done through the operating budget. So when we received our building condition survey, there were a lot of repairs in the survey that were under $5,000. And we met with the Educational Facilities Planning Committee to go through all of the recommendations for year one and I really felt that this could be absorbed. So everything you see in here with BCS next to it, that's something on the building condition survey that's being addressed in this code. So altogether, we have like, we have about a $10,000 increase for that code. Contractual service of vehicles is staying the same. HVAC, we had to increase this line. And the reason why this line is getting increased is because of the boiler maintenance. We did have our boiler people go into Stella to look at the boilers there and also look at our current boilers. And we felt that it would be prudent to budget a little bit more just for any sort of repairs that might be needed, since our, our boilers in this building are getting older. The elementary school boilers were just done, so those are in really great shape. Maintenance supplies, we increased slightly by $2,500. Really, this was because of any sort of price increases we may encounter or any additional supplies needed. These are the copier supplies in here again, but these are really, Scott took over this code. So we're not going to review that again, but there were no changes. We have lighting supplies in here, which isn't changing. We're going to keep that the same, we're not going to be increasing that. We have painting supplies, which we also are keeping stable and we're not going to be increasing or decreasing that line. And then we have our glass and window supply line, which is staying, staying constant for now, not anticipating any increases in that area. Okay, now we're getting to our grounds maintenance and we do have an increase here. So you're going to see a $10,000 increase. Part of that increase is due to the tree service that we, we're, we're trying to maintain and we are trying to keep to our tree management plan, which means that all of our trees are getting maintained throughout the year. Any dead trees that have to be removed for safety reasons are being removed. And we are going through this budget, you know, ever since we've, we've put it in place. So the money is being spent and the plan is being, is being implemented. And I think we'll probably do a presentation at one of the next board meetings to go through some of those changes. We also have some BCS items in here. This is a BCS item right here that has to do with the cast nosings on some of the stair, stairwells in the parking lot that have, actually in the outside of the grounds that have to get replaced.
Jennifer, BCS?
Is building condition survey. This is a building condition survey item, anything you see with BCS on it. And then the last item that we did add to this was athletic grass field maintenance training. We put $5,000 in here because we do understand that there's going to be a huge learning curve in maintaining our grass field. And we're hoping that vote passes in February 15th. But we, we're going to set aside some money to just get someone in here to train our folks and to provide a, a plan for us, a very specific plan of how many times, you know, we need to go through aeration, how many times we need to go through seeding and watering. need to go through seeding and watering. So, you'll see that we set aside $5,000 for that, and that really explains the increase in, in that line. Ground supplies also is increasing. It's going from $19,450 to $24,450, and the, the increase is really due to athletic grass field supplies and, you know, us anticipating we're going to need more. Right now, we just don't know how much more, so, you know, this is pretty much a guesstimate right now. Once we get more information, we will go ahead and increase those numbers or decrease those numbers going forward in draft two. So, you'll see an overall increase to his maintenance budget is $56,180. And like we said, a lot of that had to do with the middle school padding and a lot of those BCS items that we're trying to get done in this budget. But, as I keep saying throughout this whole presentation, if we find that we need to make reductions going forward, then some of those BCS items may not be addressed. The ones that aren't high priority safety items, we may be able to take those off the table, but we'll talk about that in future presentations. So, all in all, not including salaries, we're seeing the buildings and grounds budget increase by $47,884, which is a 4.98% increase. And it really, you'll see a decrease in the operation lines and increase the maintenance lines, and that's the net.
Do you anticipate that the increase in the maintenance line based on the plans to move, you know, the improvement plans that we anticipate doing in our back fields and the field over? Do you anticipate that that's gonna be an annual thing that will just be, have to be built into the budget on an ongoing basis?
We're definitely gonna have to build and increase into the budget on an ongoing basis. The only thing is, right now, is how much, and we don't know that. That's why, if we can, can get a consultant in here who specializes in that area, they'll be able to help us with that budget.
Is that, are we doing that before the budget gets locked?
We're gonna wait till February 15th.
No, I understand, well...
And then, we're gonna start searching. Then, we're gonna start searching.
The only reason why I'm asking is because that's a question that people have before February 15th, potentially, so it's, would be nice for us to have an actual answer.
Well, right now...
But, if you don't give them an answer till we've asked them to...
Well, no. If you look, if you look at the presentations on the GRAS, we've included, we've included increases in those presentations, but those increases are based on industry averages. And we know industry averages are averages, which means that, you know, we could be on the far side of the average or on the low side of the average. So, for now, those, though, you know, the total amount that we would have to add is, it was a lot of money. I think, you know, it was like $80,000 or something. And I think we have to keep in mind that if we do, we are gonna get a field, that we're not getting the field until September and maybe October. We're, we're gonna have to, it's gonna take some time for us to decide what we really need to do on this field, so you're gonna, you're dealing with a half a year of, of really maintenance for, for the field. So, I think it's probably better to just be a little more conservative at this point, and then later on, we can talk about, you know, needing additional funds. But, I really feel that we need to know where we stand with those industry averages.
No, I do too. That's why I was asking, is there a reason why we wouldn't wanna get something more concrete?
I don't, I don't know if we're gonna be able to find somebody that quickly to do a study like that, because I, yeah, you anticipate a study like that is at least $5,000. So, to get somebody in here and to do that, so I don't know if we're gonna be able to get that done. But, this is a summary again, and now, we're gonna skip to district-wide insurance. And insurance, this is not including our insurance on our buses. We're gonna go through that at our next budget workshop. So, we're keeping the line stable. We're not increasing this line at all, because what happened was, this year, we had $186,000 set aside for all of these insurance items. We spent $163,000, and we had some money left over in this line. Now, part of this money was actually added to my bus insurance line, because we did purchase new buses, and I actually didn't have enough budgeted in that line. So, there was $13,000 transferred out of this code into that code. So, when we do go through the bus insurance, you'll see an increase to that line. But, for here, even though Nicer always tells me to budget for at least like a 5%, 3% to 5% increase, we're gonna keep the line the way it is and not really show an increase. Now, we're gonna go through salaries really quickly. And as we know, our buildings and grounds salaries, we're gonna go through that first, and the unit right now doesn't have a contract. So, when you look through these salary codes and you have the detail of what's in these salary codes on the handout I handed out with everyone's name listed next to the salary, what we did was, every single person who gets paid out of this budget code will receive a step increase. So, that's tri-borough, basically, July 1st. Even if we don't have a contract in place, everyone's getting a step increase. So, the step increase is figured all down here in the 1718 budget. There's no other increase in this line. So, we'll talk about that later on through the process. But, I do have one new item in this line, and even though I included it and said salary, I really should've said new hire. So, I am budgeting to have a new hire and a new custodian hire, just because we have just been so understaffed. I could probably actually hire a new hire without even budgeting any money in this line, because what happened was, is we, every year, we go through employees having to go on leave without pay. So, this year, we had three employees that had to go out for various reasons on leave without pay, and I can tell you that I've got $47,779 sitting in that line, because we had to use either go without them and not, not have anyone at all, or we had to use subs to cover them, or we had to have guys stay on overtime to cover them. So, if I, if we agree that we do need to have this extra person, then we could leave, you know, going into draft two, we could include, keep the $36,993, which is pretty much step one on the salary schedule for a new hire. But, like I said, this year, I probably could've hired two additional people without even increasing this budget code, because we were so, we were so short. No, I'm just, I'm just giving you, I'm just, I'm just giving you the specifics on what's been happening here. So, if you look at this report... If you look at this report and you look at 1620-160, you're gonna, you'll see that, you know, expense-wise and budget-wise, if you look at what was encumbered, and like right now, I had $702,000 set aside for that line, and we only expensed $364,000. Even after encumbering all of the additional funds that we needed to pay everyone out till June, I still have all of, you know, a lot of money left over, just because of...
Jennifer, stop.
We're all in agreement that we're understaffed in that area and that that needs to happen, so...
My concern is, are we gonna, you know, does this give you enough money to do what needs to get done? Because now, we're gonna have Stella Marison. Even though it's not open, it's still gonna require some maintenance from this department. So, if you feel that with that additional responsibility, you're gonna be understaffed, now is the time to say, "This is the reality. This is what we need to maintain the plan effectively." I don't want, you know, I don't want you to, like, having it razor-thin here and then be strapped, so. And, and we wanna be accounting for it accurately, not having it be from a different line, so...
Well, if you look at the overtime lines now in the areas, you'll see that we also increased those lines, because, and we've also, we're trying to keep the sub-line stable, but we increased the sub-line significantly last year. So, there's either one of two things. We could, in fact, budget for two additional new hires, and then, we may be able to decrease some of the overtime line here, the double timeline here, and also the sub-line here. So, it could go either way.
So, I would go back and bring us, bring us that at the next one for two versus one of the differences.
I'd like, I'd like to add just the, to push for the two under the logic of, we've been on a razor-thin line for, for some time, and our square footage has gone up. And it's gone up by the exactly of 608 feet at the elementary school, which is not a substantial amount, but at the high school, we gained 12,083 feet. And if you factor in the additional building, now, we have an additional 24,786 feet, which gives us a grand total of about 37,000 feet.
And let's just add that we did discuss this during the planning phases of the purchasing of Stella Maris, that the increase would be an additional custodian right from the beginning. So, just so that the, the public understands that this was not a, you know, show and tell upfront, that that was gonna be an expense right from the beginning.
We had that line in there.
In all the presentations, so, I would say at this point, bring, put it in.
Well, I have to, well, if I really wanna be greedy, then, can we actually hire the two people earlier, since I do have all this, I do have all the money in the line? Can you think about that?
I got no problem with that either. If you got the money for it, you let's figure out the dollars instead of...
Okay. I do, I have... All right, so we're, there's really, we, you know, these overtime codes, you can see they've increased slightly, but we'll come back with, you know, a new, a new budget for these items if we do add two custodians into the other line. So, we have a total difference of $55,423. That increase is mainly due to that one extra custodian. Maintenance of plant, these are all the mechanic salaries, and this is showing only step increases. So, you can see that some of our mechanics are at top step, and their salary is not increasing going into next year. Only the mechanics who are on step actually receive the step increase in the budget. This is our overtime lines for the mechanics, and this is only going up slightly, $2,500. And that's really based on prior year and current year spending, because we have, we did go over, and, you know, we still have a lot of new, new square footage, a lot of other things in the building. Total difference for maintenance of plant salaries is $6,420. This is all the technology codes, and pretty much, they're all staying the same, and there are step increases built in. We have the clerical line, and actually, she's at top steps, that didn't change. The clerical contract's also gonna be up as of June 30th, so there was no, there's no increase in this line at all. And most of the other lines only show a slight, slight, slight increase based on the board's approval last year of a 1.9% increase to some of these individuals. The difference altogether is $3,0973. This is a summary slide, just summarizing everything we just reviewed, and this is the budget calendar. So, next, next meeting, February 13th, we're gonna go through our revenue projections, our tax levy projections. We're gonna talk about appropriated fund balance, how much can we appropriate next year, and we're gonna go through our full transportation budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Scott.
I really would like to thank Jennifer's staff for the help with this, this year. They were, did a tremendous job.
My staff, your staff.
Stand for the plate.
Yep, let's go.
All right.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You wanna start that for me, Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Give me one set letters. Yeah? She did?
Yes.
I'll call her out then. All right. Welcome to the business meeting. We are going to start, was there anybody signed up for Republican vote one? No? Okay. So, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Okay, and with the superintendent's report, we're going to start out, before Mr. Nichols gets started, I think he might be featured in the Pearson Spirit Night 2017, which was the sixth annual that is hosted by our, and get me, the Alumni Foundation. Am I getting that right, Mr. Framoff, right?
It's the Sag Harbor Booster Foundation.
Booster Foundation, oh, it did so well. So, and Christine, I think you helped this as well. So, I just thought we'd start out a little louder and prouder.
Spirit Night at Pearson Middle High School scored one giant victory for the Sag Harbor community on Friday night. Sag Harbor Booster Foundation's sixth annual Spirit Night packed the gym with students, family, alumni, and community members who came together to celebrate Whaler pride.
I think it means a lot. It's a, it's a tradition now. It's the sixth annual. We can't thank the Booster Foundation enough. And, you know, it's a special night. I always say, "Hallelujah," when I'm here.
Our main goal is to provide enrichment opportunities to students that might not normally be covered by the school. And we meet every month so that we can come up with new ideas and different things that we can do. And we're always looking for more teachers and community members to come to us with ideas of things that we can find.
Pearson's girls and boys' basketball teams competed, but displayed a spirited charge in the fourth quarter, with the leading whale who fell to Southwood Greenberg 69 to 65. The boys cruised to a 63-54 win over Southwood, to close out in nightly celebrations. One senior was, of course, a little bit younger than the other.
Well, the crowd this year was just like, it was amazing, and I couldn't ask for a better vibe than here.
Well, coming from a small town, it's just so nice to come here and see everybody from different grades, people who have already graduated, people who are in the elementary school come together and support us. And as you can see, even though if we're like down by a few points or if we lose, we're still there to pick each other up. And I think that's what this is, this night is really all about.
For the Sag Harbor Express, I'm Gavin Manu.
So, and then, we'll move to Mr. Nichols with the principal's report. We also wanna say the robotics team was there, the elementary, you're gonna have to tell me what the different elementary teams were. That was your morning...
The youth hoop.
Youth hoops were there as well.
We had the youth hoop boys and girls there.
Yeah.
It was the biggest game of the season for them.
So many of them!
That little, that little blonde that was like, that was like this big.
One of our coaches' daughters, Ally Cottrell, who's, who's a little bit shorter than the girls in her grade, shot it up there in the 10-foot basket. It was the highlight of the night.
It was the highlight. It was awesome.
It was really neat. It was really neat. And the, it was, it was really amazing.
I was sitting next to some elementary school parents who really hadn't been to the venue before and watched a high school event. They were so excited. They kept saying like, "Who's that? And who's that?" And they were asking these questions, and you could see that it really got them more comfortable and excited, I think, about their kids coming over to this building. So, it's a really wonderful venue to build, to build that, you know, that security and support.
And they got to see the elementary principal and the high school principal out there playing basketball. It was really cool. And all the teachers, and they got to see the, you know, the first responders out there playing, which were their, you know, moms and dads and uncles. But, I gotta tell you, you two were the big hit. I gotta tell you two out there.
I know, Danny White was pretty hot.
Well, I think that, I don't know how Mr. Malone thinks, but I said to my kids when I got back, "I don't know how often I'm gonna do that anymore." I used to be a good basketball player. Now, I'm just, I get the ball and I panic. At one point, I, I remember like doing a backward roll on the floor, and I don't even know how that happened.
I was wondering if they were gonna get back up.
Yeah, so, thankfully, my kids didn't come, 'cause they would've told me that they were embarrassed. It's all right, though.
We're gonna have to start coaching this.
There you go, yeah.
You may have to be the, the officials.
Yeah. All right. Pearson Middle High School past events. I won't go through every one, 'cause I've been told to be brief. You can look at those. I think just a highlight, Mr. Guyan did a, did a great job on the IB Diploma Program informational night. Those who attended, I think, found it to be very informative. And the I Tri Student Parent Meeting, Ms. Graves is involved in that along with Ms. Mariidis and Ms. Denapoli. The other things have happened. Upcoming events, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. I think we've got 62 students who are randomly selected by the government, federal government. Out of 77, those students will be notified and are tested on the 8th of February. Those, that information's confidential, their names are confidential, that is, and that information's used as a data point for the federal government to look at our, our progress in the, in the field of education. Middle School Musical, that is big news, the 9th through the 12th. P.S., I love you day the 10th, the 15th. I'm sure the superintendent will talk about that a little more at some point. Midwinter recess is three weeks away. When we get back, it's the first day of the High School Musical. Dr. Dewey, who came to present to students in grades 9, 10, and 11, he's coming back on the 28th, and he'll be presenting to the 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, a different version of the presentation that's more age-appropriate, and he'll also be presenting to our seniors. And that's on the 28th, the Pops Concert, the 8th of March, and parent-teacher conferences the 9th through 10th. Couple of pictures, IB Diploma Information Night. That's Mr. Rude and Mr. Schumacher and Mr. Schulman in the bottom right, presenting the science... presenting the science curricula to the parents. In the upper left is a panel of current and past students. So the student all the way to the right is Meggy Atkinson Barnes, who is a freshman at Brown. The other five students there are currently diploma candidates. And all the way to the right is a parent rep, which is Mary Ann Miller, who gave her perspective on the program. I thought that particular breakout group was very, very helpful and provided some information for parents considering enrolling their pro, their children in the program. Giving gift card tree, snowflake tee.
Ms. Ramona.
That's Ms. Ramona and her grandson.
Sadie.
Sixth grade chorus, Mr. Malone. Any questions? Alright, thank you.
This evening, Ms. Ray Nelson's going to actually present our past, past events for the elementary.
Hi, thank you. Hello, I have also been told to be brief, which I'm grateful for, being that it's my first time speaking in this capacity. I'd just like to highlight a few of the elementary school events, which, as you see there, are quite a few. It's chock full of activity in our building. Two things in particular I'd like to speak about are the, the morning program activities, which was, one, based on quaint towns. Every week on Monday, our reading specialist presents a word of the week. And one of the things that makes it really neat is her ability to present it in a manner that's relevant and real to the kids. So this particular word quaint regarding towns around the globe is something she spoke about and she shared pictures that were relative to the word quaint. She also had the opportunity to visit one of the towns that she spoke of a few days later, which was also neat because then it was seeing the reading teacher in those actual pictures visiting a quaint town. So I think they really appreciated that. We have the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior presentations. It was five fifth graders speaking about Dr. Martin Luther King and everything that he stood for. Yellow Dino is a program on stranger danger and internet safety. Our school cons, excuse me, our school counselor spoke to parents in the evening regarding language to use in regards to stranger danger and how to present that information to their children. It's also an ongoing program with the kids in school as well, in all grade levels. Cool Parks Around the World was also by our school counselor. And she also shared some neat pictures, which I have also on this slide. March of the Penguins kindergarten and the Parish Shop Museum, which is an ongoing presentation with our fourth graders displaying their work. So I could share some of those pictures. So quaint town that our reading teacher went to, Leavenworth, Washington, which is a town that models Bavarian villages in Europe. So you could see it's very traditional in terms of the architecture and you have the Cascade Mountains in the background, which is where she went. This is one of the presentations on Cool Parks. It's a little difficult to see, but this is a park housed within a city, which makes it unusual in itself because it's outdoor. But just the idea of urban area with a park smack in the middle. The kids love that. This is Australia. So just to give you some perspective, this slide is, so if you think of our gymnasium, pretty much from floor to ceiling is the height of that slide. So that's pretty crazy. The kids love that as well. And here we have a slumber party for pajama day at pre-k. And Mr. Malone will speak about upcoming events.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Nelson. Nicely presented.
We're not that bad.
Just to, just to highlight a few of the upcoming events, some of you may be familiar with the annual Super Bowl. Obviously, the big game comes up this Sunday. But on Friday, before we head off for the weekend, the elementary school students participate in our annual Super Bowl. This is our, our ninth Super Bowl. And the students are asked to bring in a donation of a can of soup, which will then be used to make a prediction as to who the winner of the big game's going to be. And, you know, so we'll see what the school's prediction is, but we always talk to the students about how the real winner is the Sag Harbor Food Pantry. We saw a picture of Mrs. Ramona a few moments ago. She's, she's the leader of a lot of the great work that's done that, down there. And every year we make a nice donation of cans of soup to, to those that could use some help during the winter. And then on the ninth, we have our annual science fair. These projects are presented by fourth and fifth grade students with the help of their classroom teachers and, of course, our science teacher, Ms. Olson. And most of the students work on individual projects, but this year, many of the children have teamed with partners. I actually saw our athletic director helping his son with his project today. He was testing how an egg can be dropped from the roof of the building and not break. So I think we have some fun pictures of that. And the, the egg stayed intact, correct? Yes, it did, no, all three attempts. Yeah. So we're, so we're looking forward to the science fair on the ninth. And then you could see some of the other events, which, as Mr. Nichols said, I think we'll speak about shortly with regards to the forum tomorrow and the vote on the fifteenth. Thank you.
And that's just a reminder that tomorrow, Tuesday, January thirty-first, at seven PM in the Sag Harbor Elementary Gymnasium is a community forum on grass fields proposition vote, and all are welcome.
Is there gonna be like a presentation or?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It'll start with, I will be providing the overview. And along with Mr. Malone, who'll be talking about the features that would be advantageous. And our architects, BBS, will be here. Larry Salverson and the landscape architect, John Longo, will talk about their bits. It'll really be just a matter of a few slides. My slides will be the overview. Jennifer Puchamiel will go through the financials. The BBS architects will talk about their elements that they see in what it would look like from a installation piece. And Mr. Malone will talk about the attributes that he sees from where there are concerns, where there are needs. And I have great pictures of what it could look like. I even have, and of course, Eric Bramoff will be there talking about, like I have some photos of what a two-hundred-and-fifty-seat roll-up, helping with the bleachers would look like. And so, and where like the staircase would go in, because that's, people need visuals. So I've added some visuals, but not too long a visuals. Brief visuals. But I just put all the elements into pictures. Okay.
Well, it's a good thing we have a new system at the elementary school then to show this presentation on, okay? So you're gonna see the, the new screen and the projector in use at the elementary school tomorrow night. They were finished up a couple of weeks ago and they've been in use every day since then. And so far, so good. Everything's working well. So for those of you that haven't been over there, haven't been over there in a while, instead of having two individual screens with two separate projectors, we have one very large screen with one very powerful projector. It's centered in the room, so regardless of which corner of the room you're sitting in, you now have a good view of what's going on.
It looks brighter, a lot brighter.
Oh, it's significantly brighter. And the sound system has been improved as well, so there's, you know, much better speakers associated. And with the new system, they have the freedom in the morning to actually move out from that corner with the computer that's controlling everything and sit in the back of the room because we've put the Apple TV in there. So it gives them a little bit more flexibility. So that's just taking place over at the elementary school. That work is finally completed. Just briefly, the distance learning is really starting to take hold over at the elementary school. I know there's lots of interest in the various virtual field trips that are available. And we're trying to work out a process for the teachers to be able to, to book those and how that's going to be handled. So the, the interest level is definitely up along with, with the use. And over here at Pearson, we haven't quite gotten the teachers up to speed on the, on the field trip aspect yet. But we were able to use the room recently for a educational facilities planning committee meeting. And I believe, Jennifer, you benefited from having the multiple screens available to you to be able to show more than one thing at the same time to the audience. So the room is definitely getting use and expect that, that usage to improve.
Scott, can I give an example? One that's gonna be going on is the third grade, learning about their local region, wanted to show the children what it was to be, what whaling was. And so they're going to the National Whaling Museum in New Bedford, Massachusetts, which has a distance learning. And they're gonna meet traditional whalers in their whaling garb who will answer questions and take them all through the Whaling Museum. You know, even though it's not our Whaling Museum, but it is a full-blown Whaling Museum, so they'll see all the original things. And the children will be able to ask questions and be virtually there, which that kind of field trip would be, would be impossible for us to do. So they're pretty excited. So that's gonna be stepping out within the next week.
Can I ask a question? So on the distant learning, we were talking about, while we were talking about installing this and having, you know, like high school kids take classes and stuff like that. So how many kids are taking classes this year?
We haven't, we haven't had students take classes yet. That's gonna, the, the teachers' union is, has kind of waived that, that right. They, it's just now a matter of starting to see where we, where guidance office sees requests or needs and we can start plugging that in. So it's, there was a little bit of a fear factor to start with, but I think, I think we're ready. So when we start seeing needs, like for example, a student that can't meet, let's, let's say it's A.B. Calc and they need the next A.B. Calc, or they need some specific thing. There's a schedule out there and we're, we're ready.
So when do you expect to be launching some new distant learning programming that is not just one-offs, but you know, something more, more scheduled and programmatic?
I think it'll be driven by, by our guidance office and by specific, we won't develop a schedule. It'll be, it'll be need-based. It's really, they're, they're not your core classes. It's your extra classes or classes that can't be scheduled in.
So how does a student or student's parents know this exists and what the options are that they may want to make a request? What's that process look like?
It isn't a request from parents. It really isn't. It's just what we can't meet the needs of by particular children when they're scheduling. Because it isn't, it isn't a, it is, it's almost like a poker game where you come to the table and say, "This child is missing this specific item, this specific thing." It isn't a, it isn't a gallery of things.
I'm only asking because I know when this was originally pitched, before it was approved, one of the premises was that this was gonna be able to open up new curriculum and new courses that we might be too small to offer or not have a resident expert to teach, that this was gonna give us access to expanded curriculum and options. But now I'm hearing that it's a little different, that the focus has shifted.
No, it's always been the same. Distance learning is, is very protective, number one. You, you don't want to ever compete with your teachers. So you don't compete with saying, "We're gonna abscond with your teacher times and selections." But it's always available to the guidance counselors for a child that has a need.
Okay.
So, for example, a child that is looking for a specific class for their specific need. Now, that doesn't mean that a parent's not in there going, "This child really needs sports and marketing," or "This child really needs, you know, Latin," or "This child needs whatever." They'll, they'll make it happen for them. But we didn't have it, but this was not up and ready at the start of the school year. So it is up and ready now, so, for, for classes. But we're already in our second semester. So we're gonna really start building towards it to start next year. And to see whatever our teachers want to offer.
And just quickly, a note about the Pearson auditorium. One of the big concerns was the wireless microphones being here for the upcoming middle school production. Yes, Little Mermaid.
Little Mermaid.
Wasn't sure what you said. I had to think about that for a moment. Sorry.
All her kids are out of it now. She's gonna go and watch it.
I am, I am.
That's fine, I encourage you all to go.
I got my tickets.
I encourage you all to go. The point is, there was some concern that the, the needed wireless microphone system wouldn't be here in time for the play. It has arrived. It came in yesterday. If you, that picture on the bottom left, part of the cabinetry that's there for the lighting and sound was just for that purpose, so that we could slide additional equipment in there. So the wireless equipment has been mounted. It's been connected tonight. And as of tomorrow, we will have the earpieces that go along with the lav mic. So if they choose to, they could actually start rehearsing being miked up as of tomorrow. But that's up to, obviously, the folks doing the play. The auditorium was also used the other night for the concert by Bobby, was it Sannabria, I believe, is how he pronounces it?
Yep.
And from what I hear, I wasn't able to make it myself. I was FaceTimed in though, so the, the sound quality was great. I know he had come in Thursday to do a masterclass with some of the Pearson students and we went over the auditorium with him and he was very impressed with the sound quality and thought, you know, it would work out well there. And the camera, which had been an issue previously, if you'll recall, I'm sorry, Jeff, who's the speaker? That's kind of, Dr. Dewey. The last time he was here, the production quality of the, the video that we recorded his session was, was really not what it should've been. There was a problem with the camera. That camera was actually replaced and it's been, it's been fixed. So, I'm sorry, the camera wasn't placed, the camera was repaired. The, the projector had to be replaced. But everything is working properly and we do now have the ability to record any event and they're both high-quality audio and video. And lastly, the Cyber Patriots. We last competed January thirteenth. As always, the kids do a great job with this. The middle school team will be advancing to the semifinals, which will take place the week of February third through fifth. Unfortunately, the high school team missed advancing to the regional round by just one point nine points. So their season has come to an end. But we actually only had a very small number of high school students this year, so I'm hoping next year we can, we can improve upon that as the middle school students move up. And, but everybody did a great job as always. Mr. Bramoff? Good evening again. We have some brief slides from our Buildings and Grounds Department. One major thing that we did was kind of hybrid between the two departments as we redid the uniform storage facility based right next to the athletic director's office. We have seven very large clothing hangers. And now we're able to catalog and get a real, true visualization of exactly what our uniform inventory is. This is seen as a major cost-saving measure moving forward. We don't have, we no longer have to guess how many of each uniform we have and what condition it's in. We can actually go in and look at the uniform. Obviously, we spent a tremendous amount of time this week on the Buildings and Grounds budget and that's most of the work that's been done for facilities. We have this nice picture here of Mrs. Graves and Jennifer outside signing our, our new building in Stellamaris. And since taking over Stellamaris, we've developed a plan for it to be checked seven days a week just to make sure that all the operational systems and barring any, you know, major problems, we would be notified within a couple hours. We've set up a small shop just to maintain the heating and plumbing systems and electric.
That's Father Peter Devaraj, by the way.
I, I didn't know Father, so it was, it's, but I, I've been going down there a lot, so I, I'm feeling very, very, like I've been going to church. So athletics, some past events. We had the Hot Stove baseball event where we brought one of Pearson High School's former players, Kyle McGowan, in. He's actually been traded to the Washington Nationals and be playing Syracuse. He'll be playing in Syracuse this summer. So he's come home from the West Coast. And I'm hoping in September, or maybe even earlier, he gets to play with the big club. It was great. We had about thirty Little Leaguers. There would've been more, except there were some basketball commitments. But from the, the kids that attended it, it was a wonderful presentation given by Kyle and the baseball coaches. Late winter sports have begun. We had an athletic committee the other night. I, I think it was with some great input from Mr. Nichols. I think we've got some, some really good things going with the athletic committee. Spirit Night, as you know, was Friday night. And that's the reason I don't have a voice. Baseball Open Gym has been up and running. We had some, about thirteen people attend this weekend. We're running a series of three baseball open gyms. Senior Night for Girls Basketball and Boys Basketball are coming up. And again, we'll have another baseball open gym on February eleventh. This is a picture of Kyle signing some autographs for our youngsters. This is our, our fearless leaders right after they got nice and sweaty. Hot stoves, I'll defer to Sandy on this one.
Like a Hot Topic Hot Stove, it's, you know, it's just what they call it.
It's a, it's a baseball terminology. It's, it's what they would talk about when there was nothing to talk about in the offseason. So they talk about trade rumors and stuff like that. But this is Mr. Nichols and Mr. Malone right after the- like that. But this is Mr. Nichols and Mr. Malone right after they led the faculty to the second victory in a row. And some great pictures here of both our little guys and our fans and it was a good night. And the bottom right picture there, I really want to make a point of is, that's kind of like the brain trust of our Booster Foundation. Obviously, Krista Sliker should be included in that slide as well as Jeff Peters. But the Booster Foundation really does a tremendous job with, with the help of Spirit Night. And I just think it's a great night in general. And, you know, we could, we can keep talking about it, but it's, I just think that they're the behind-the-scenes people and they really make it happen. So kudos to them.
Can I point out that several other people on the Booster Foundation Board who are pictured there, their kids have all graduated from the district and they still committing all of this time and energy and passion to still doing it and giving back even though their kids have graduated. And so I want to thank them for, for continuing to contribute.
And we, and you know, Chris, that's an excellent point. And I have a lot of, I have a lot of good relationships with the Booster Foundation and they've got a lot of things that are up and coming. So we'll be looking forward to that later. Another point I wanted to speak out briefly was we brought the cheerleaders over to morning program. And I did not include the video, but they requested after they did their presentation, they wanted to stay for the school song. And I, I personally usually exit stage left during the school song, but the cheerleaders insisted. And I think they really enjoyed going back to the elementary school and spreading some school spirit.
Thank you. We just have some dates on the community forum, which will be tomorrow evening. Grasp proposition vote for, to redistribute the funds will be on Wednesday, February 15th here at the Pearson Gym. And the Board of Education Budget Workshop and Educational Meeting will be moving from March 6th to March 13th.
I just want to add that I, I did tell Mary that I was not here on the 13th. I had planned on being here the 6th and missing a meeting because I'm going to go Hot Stove it in Tampa and watch my own kid play baseball. So that's going to put me at, now missing two meetings back to back. So I just wanted to put that there upfront. So my trip was planned prior to the change.
But I'm sorry, is the 20th going back to the 27th?
No.
Nope. It's back to that week. So that's why.
So it's going to stay 13 and 20. Scott Fisher, that conflicts with yours. I'm sorry.
Yes.
But that's okay. I give my voting rights to Scott Fisher any day.
Me too.
There you go. You got two votes. Cancel the meeting. Okay.
Okay, let's go. We still are working out the school business report, long-range four-year financial plan.
Just sound so excited. Why don't you?
Because I just listened to you for three hours.
It was one.
Three.
It was a long time.
Forty-five minutes.
Did I read six?
What time is it? 11?
It's 8:30.
No, she's, remember her New Year's resolution?
We're working on it. We're working on it. She's going to be, but she's just going to get, you guys did ask us to greet this three years ago.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is very important right here. So, yeah, this is important.
Oh, this looks bad.
Financial plan, building condition survey. Knocking them all off. It's all good.
There you go.
We're not going to, we're not going to read every page. So we're good.
I am.
I know we are, but we're not going to read it out loud now, is what I'm saying.
Move the start.
That's a different one. That's a different call. We got the building condition survey. We got the four-year financial plan. Good. And we have snow tomorrow morning for those who are listening. I'll let you know.
No snow days.
Just my things from the evening.
We lose the day after Easter and should be a holiday.
Eric, you look that weather up for me.
Oh, this is the second one.
I have two of the same. I just have two of the same.
You hand those out. That's what it is. Actually, another one. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, so let's get started. Tonight, we're going to go through our financial plan and we're going to review some historical information. And we're also going to go through the recently released fiscal stress scores that the State Comptroller's Office just released on January 25th. So we'll get started. So as you can see, this was definitely one of our goals and we agreed that we were going to do the presentation tonight to meet that, to meet that department goal of mine. The last time we did this was in December of 2015. We did our long-range financial plan presentation. The reason why we didn't do this in December of 16 was because I really did want to get our most updated fiscal stress scores and to incorporate those in the presentation because not only are we talking about financial planning, but we really need to focus on where we are right now financially. What is our financial condition today? Are we healthy? And those stress scores really do tell us a lot of information. And they're released for every single school district in the whole state. So we did do though in 2016, we updated our reserves plan and the board reaffirmed all the balances as of June 30th, 16. And that's something that we are going to have to also do every year. We'll have to renew the long-range financial plan and also renew our reserves fund plan. So multi-year financial planning defined. A multi-year financial plan projects revenues and expenditures for several years into the future. It illustrates what may happen to our ability to pay for services. And these projections are really supposed to be used for planning purposes. And there's a lot of assumptions made throughout the presentation and we'll go through those. Creating a multi-year plan, of course, we include all of our revenue projections going forward out to 2021, expenditure projections, annual deficits and surpluses. We'll, we'll review those. And you'll see our fund balance dwindle as we move forward because we are assuming that we do not end up with any year-end surplus at the end of the year. We're, we're assuming a lot of different things throughout the plan. But one of the most important indicators of financial health and our financial condition is our fund balance. And if you go through, you can see that at June 30th, 16, our fund balance did grow. So even though we did use some of our reserves throughout the year in 15, 16, we did add to our fund balance $1.4 million. So we went from a fund balance of $9,528,495 at the end of June 30th, 2015, up to $10,932,000 at the end of 2016. Now, that does seem like a lot of money and that does come to a little over 30% of our current expenditures. But if you look at the next slide, you can see that historically, it was not always like that. Back in 2010, 11, the district only had a little more than half a million dollars in fund balance. And you can see that over the years, the fund balance has grown, but the financial health of the district was not good back then. And, you know, there's a fine line with fund balance because you don't want to have too much of it and you, but you don't want to have, you want to have enough so that you could use it in the future to cover any sort of unexpected or unplanned expenses that may occur and also to address any spikes in the tax levy moving forward. So there is a fine line on how much fund balance we really should have. But we do have a plan for the use of our fund balance and reserves. So we are meeting all of the statutory requirements right now.
Jennifer, can you remind us what the state recommends as the range of fund, of percentage of fund balance?
The state does not recommend a percentage of fund balance. Our unreserved fund balance is, has to be no more than 4%. So we have 4% emergency funds every year. All of our other fund balance, which is set aside in reserves, all of these items, there is no specific percentage applied to these items. But they do recommend that there is a plan to fund these items and there is an objective, that you do have a goal to reach. You need to indicate maximum level of funding and you need to also indicate the plan to either spend them down or increase them. And we do. We have a plan for every single one of our reserves that we have in place right now. So fund balance, as I said, has grown throughout the years. And if you look at our fund balance, this is the last fiscal year and here's the $1.4 million again and there's a $10.9. Now, when you look at our budget projections, this is our budget for the current year. This is assuming that we don't have any year-end surplus left over. Assuming there's no year-end surplus left over, we're going to use $905,961 of our fund balance. Because when we prepared the budget, our current year budget, we agreed that we would use $405,961 that we were going to appropriate from our reserve fund balance. And we were also going to use $500,000 of ERS retirement reserves to supplement the funding. So you'll see fund balance going down from $10.9 to $10 million. But that may not actually happen if we do have year-end surplus at the end. Or it could actually be a much larger decrease if we decide to use some of our reserves throughout the year. So how does this tie into the big picture? I, I went onto the Moody's website to just look at historically where the district's been. And you can see that when we had $552,401 of fund balance, which is back in 2010, 11, you know, that was when Moody's on June 2010 said that they downgraded the district to A1 status and they placed a negative outlook on our rating. So that was not a good thing, especially when it comes to borrowing and when we're looking at getting the best interest rates that we possibly can get. But since June 8th, 2010, you can see that Moody's has upgraded us. And one of the reasons why they did upgrade us is because of our fund balance. And we've gone from an A1 up to a double A3, up to a double A2. So we're really headed in the right direction. And this really does help us with our, with our debt service and borrowing costs. So now I'm going to discuss the fiscal stress monitoring system. And this is something that was developed by the State Comptroller's Office. And it was supposed to help local governments and school districts identify stress and, you know, before they get hit with it and also show who is susceptible to fiscal stress and who isn't. So all of their system, their system basically has environmental indicators and financial indicators. And what they do is they take all of our data that we entered into our, we send all of our financial data to the New York State Education Department at the end of the year. And they take all of that data and they basically score us on that data. So this is just showing over a three-year period how our percentage of fund balance compared to our peer group has, has gotten better over the years. So you can see in 2013, 14, we had 23.8% of fund balance as a percentage of gross expenditures. So we were right in line with the other Long Island schools. But we were a little, you know, our percentage was a little less than all the schools in the state and also all the small downstate schools. You can see in 14, 15, that percentage has increased to 27.8. And you can see that we've, in 14, 15, we were doing a little better in the fund balance area than the rest of the state. Now, total fund balance as a percentage of gross expenditures for the current year, we also did well. And our score, here's a 30.9% right there. And compared to the rest of the schools in the state, we are in very good financial health when it comes to fund balance. And this is all the numbers. All the schools, 671. Long Island Schools, 123. Small Downstate Schools, 97. This is our fiscal stress score system. This is how the State Comptroller classifies us. So if you have a score anywhere from 0 to 44.9%, then you, you're not designated at all. So you don't have any fiscal stress at that point. 45% to 54.9% means you're susceptible to fiscal stress and so on, moderate fiscal stress, significant. And districts throughout the state, I believe they fare better this year overall than last year. But you do see on Long Island, there are school districts that fall into every single category. So our fiscal stress score has not changed, which is really a good thing. From 2014, our score was 10%. 2015, 2016. And they are projecting that based on the current data, that our score will probably be the same for the 16, 17 school year. So that's what we're hoping. Nothing major happens. What is this score based on? And as I said earlier, there's financial indicators and then there are economic, environmental indicators. So all of the financial indicators, they fall into categories. Fund balance is category, operating deficits, cash position, use of short-term debt. These are all the financial indicator categories. And you can see the only area where we received points was in the area of short-term debt issuance. And that is because we do issue a TAN every year. Two years ago, we issued a $10 million TAN. Last year, a $10.5 million TAN. This year, an $11 million TAN. And a TAN is a tax anticipation note. And we do have to issue it every year for cash flow purposes, just because we start our school year July 1st, but we don't receive our property taxes until either the last week in December or the first week in January. So we do have to borrow in order to cover our bills for that period of time. So I don't anticipate the score going down at all at any time unless we were so cash-rich that we didn't have to ever borrow money again for, to pay our bills. These are all the environmental indicators. You have property value, changes in property value, change in enrollment, budget votes, whether or not they are approved the first time around, graduation rates, free and reduced lunch percentages. These are all items that we could have received scores on. But as you can see, we didn't receive any scores in this area. So we, we have no designation, which is a good thing. Because in this case, the higher the score, the worse off you are. The lower the score, the better off you are.
Jennifer, in putting together the three to five-year plan, did you take into account the anticipated enrollment numbers? If so, are they built in somewhere here?
No, we'll, I'll show you an enrollment slide. But right now, the plan is just based on averages. It's based on averages from the prior years and it's also based on tweaks to those averages for the, for the, for the next school years. I'll, I'll go through that in the next few slides. This is all the data that they use to calculate our scores. And these are all the numbers that they get from the New York State Education Department that we upload. So you can see, we got three points in the short-term debt area there. It's debt as a percentage of our total revenues and then also debt issuances for the last three years. And that gave us a 10% score. This is all on the State Comptroller's website and anyone can go ahead and click on this link and they can find all of this information. That brings us back to our historical data. And you'll see our historical data is broken out by function, many different areas. We have general support. We have instruction, transportation, community services, employee benefits, debt service and inter-fund transfers. So all of the salaries are in each individual area, but the employee benefits are taken out and put in their own area. So for instance, all the transportation salaries are included in transportation, but that also includes all the contractual, all the materials and supplies, all the equipment. And the same thing for instruction. This is all of the teacher salaries, all the instructional salaries for the TAs. But this also includes materials and supplies, equipment, contractual items. And the same for general support. So now you can see where we've been. And this goes all the way back to 2011 and to 2016. So this is all actual, this is all of our actual revenues and this is all of our actual expenses. And this is the budget. This is our current year budget plugged in because we don't know how well we're going to do or how badly we're going to do by the end of the year. And these are all the average increases that were computed based on all of those prior years. So.
Can I ask a question about the tuition line?
Mm-hmm.
The, you know, now that we have the contracts, we have Sagaponic, we added Wayne Scott. Can you just kind of shed some light as to why we still anticipate the tuition amounts going down with these?
We lost a lot of students from Springs. And we, and that decrease there is mostly from those students leaving. We've gained students from Wayne Scott and we've also gained students from Sagaponic, but that may change also next year because Sagaponic is looking to also offer their students more choice and offer them entry into Bridgehampton. So, this is, this number is always going to be changing. You know, back then, we were a high of 900,000 in tuition we received. We also actually have less parentally-placed students now than we've had in the past. So, parentally-placed.
What does that mean?
It's parents who send their children to...
Parentally.
Parentally-placed.
I thought you said friendly.
No, parentally-placed students that come to our district. Those numbers have also gone down. So, this is why. This is actual tuition received. So, you can see, for the current year budget, we brought that down to 440 because last year, we only collected 459. Going down towards the bottom, you can see the various areas that have gone up or down. You know, general support did, has gone up, but in our current budget, we did decrease the budget for general support, increased the budget for instruction, and we have some other increases and decreases slight going forward. And that's the historical data. So, if we just project those numbers out to 2021 using the same average increases, then what happens is, assuming that we don't end up with any surplus at the end of the year, what would happen is, we're going to imagine our fund balance being one big pot of money and the fund balance being dwindled going forward because we're going to be in a deficit situation. And this is very normal. When you are doing projections far out into the future, it is very normal to have deficits because you're not taking into account, of course, any changes that are being made as you're going along. So, any changes that are made this year through negotiations, any changes this year that are made in the use of reserves or surpluses, that's not incorporated into any of these numbers. So, this is really the doom and gloom situation. If not, if everything stays the same and nothing changes, there is no cost savings or no additional revenue coming in and if we have to tap into our fund balance every year. So, if that happened, then we would be in a deficit situation with no fund balance left by 2021. And that's just using average increases from 2011 to 2017. But we know that the tax cap only came into effect in 2013. So, these averages going back to 2011 may not be the best averages to use. And this is just a chart of showing the deficit. So, this is the current year. We're going to assume a deficit because we have a planned deficit. We decided that we were going to appropriate $905,000 from reserves and fund balance. But in reality, we'll probably end up with some money left over at the end of the year. So, this will change. This is just showing it a different way. This is fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and you could see just our fund balance going down every year. And really, 2020, 2021 being the year where we end up in the negative. So, now, this is the same scenario, but only instead of using the average increase from 2011 to 2017, we plugged in some different numbers. So, instead of the real property tax item line increasing by 3.63, we said, you know what, last year, our tax levy limit was, our tax levy increase was 2.98. So, we plugged in 2.98% for those, from 2018 to 2021. Star, even though we're showing a star decrease, we're going to assume that star does increase by 2%, even though it may or may not. But this is just another way of doing this and you can see, by just changing some of these percentages and using different estimates, you can see that in 2021, we actually still have fund balance in this scenario. In this scenario, just by changing some of these percentages, we actually will be in the positive situation in 2021. And then going out to 2022, we may in fact not have any fund balance left. But in this scenario, we do have $1.8 million left in fund balance. And this is the graphs depicting those scenarios. This is some trends that I just wanted to bring up. And you can see that overall, budget to actual expenditures, our average increase from 2010 to 2017 was 3.91%, and that's budget. But if you look at our actual, what did we actually spend? If you go from 2010 to 2016, because we don't know what's going to happen yet for the current year, our actual increase in spending was 2.81% in total spending. If you look at our revenues now, you'll see that revenue budget, we projected an average increase in revenue going from '10 to '17 of 3.91%. But our revenue actually increased a little bit more than that. So, going from 2010 to 2016, our revenue actually went up by 4.33%. But now, if you look at just the tax cap years, if you look at just the tax cap years, you'll see that the average of the tax cap years of spending was 2.6% and the average increase in revenue for the tax cap years was just 2.13%. So, you could see that's a huge difference going from 2010 to 2016 and then from 2013 to 2016. So, you see where that tax cap came into play and how it affected our revenue, our actual revenues collected. So, just going on the bottom here, it's just giving you the picture of where we are again, difference between budget versus actual for all of these years and then operating surpluses and deficits, which match the $1.4 million is going right back to that fund balance slide in the beginning. Annual salary and benefit trends. You can see our total budget and the percentage of salary and benefits towards our total, compared to our total budget. And back in '11-'12, 75.8% of our budget was spent on salaries and benefits. We went to a high in '13-'14 of 81.49% of our budget was salary and benefits. But now, you can see, we're dipping a little bit and a lot of that has to do with the TRS and ERS retirement systems. Their contribution rates have been stable for the past few years. It is actually going down slightly for '17-'18. It is being offset, though, by our very high health insurance increases going forward. So, you'll see our '15-'16 expenses, we went down to 78.9% of our budget with salary and benefits. And our current budget is estimating about 78% for salary and benefits. These are just the latest enrollment projections I have. I actually do not have the most recent because they're still working on them, but they're the same projections that have been, that have been shown throughout the Stellamaris process. And this was actually shown last year, too. So, our enrollment projections do not really show a huge increase, but it does show an increase up to, really, 2017-'18 would be our high and then going down from there a little bit. So, we really want to plan for the future. We want to use this as just one of the tools we use to plan for the future and sustain our educational programs. That's really what's most important. So, we should continue to monitor our reserve fund balances and increase any reserves that are underfunded. Certain reserve funds can be utilized to help protect the budget against known risks. Our annual budget should be prepared using a zero-based budgeting approach. So, a reduction should be made using the most up-to-date information available, including recent trend analysis. And I think we have shown that we've done that, especially during the budget workshop we had earlier today. And also, we need to explain in detail why we need to have a budget increase in every single area. And budget increases should be controlled as much as possible. Current and future savings, of course, should be captured through the collective bargaining process in order to sustain programs well into the future. Also, we need to continue sharing services with our neighboring municipalities and we need to generate more revenue whenever possible. That's the only way we're going to continue doing well and we're going to continue having a strong financial outlook and very strong financial condition and hopefully, another Moody's upgrade in the future. So, does anyone have any questions?
Can I ask a question about the enrollment slide, please?
Yep.
It says here, this is from Bosse's. Do they use the census data? Is that how they provide numbers to us?
This is taken directly out of that long-range planning report that they do and there's a lot of data in there. They get data from, yeah, hospitals. They get birth rates, all sorts of things.
They use building starts, too, from the, like, the construction firms and real estate.
So, their 2016 number, which is our current year, correct? Is that our current school year?
Yeah, this is not, this is not the most accurate because I should have already a projection that says 2016 actual because that's based on the beds date, which would have been in October of 2016. So...
But you know how many students are enrolled in the district. So, what is that actual number for this year?
981 is the total with the pre-K and I actually don't even know the number off the top of my head for the exact number for '16. So, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay.
Why, what was your theory, Chris?
I don't have a theory. I was just, if we knew what the current year was compared to their objections, it would give us a sense of how reliable this might be. That's all. Because this is showing, you know, based on this, if this is really accurate and, you know, there's a crystal ball. You never know when you're going to get any flexible people or we may have a neighboring district where we get another agreement with. But this looks like in the next 10 years, they're projecting, you know, losing over 10% of this enrollment. So, that's why I was asking, you know, if this goes out and the public sees this, if there were any caveats or any other additional information, that is good to share.
This is the same one we had from Stellamaris. They haven't updated this since last year.
Okay.
Jennifer?
Yep.
Thank you for doing this. I think this is very good.
Oh, you're welcome.
It seems like one of the variables here is on the revenue side.
Yep.
We really don't know what the changes are going to be in enrollment, like Chris is saying, you know, or we, and we don't know what kind of state aid numbers that we're going to get or we cannot project what our tax base is going to be at that time. So, the revenue portion is really a bit of a variable.
It is. It is unpredictable. I mean, but just seeing the difference in the average increase from tax cap years compared to all years, I mean, that is a huge difference.
Right.
You add a 4.3% average increase, go down to a 2.13% average increase. So, it really is the revenue side that we're going to have to hopefully enhance any revenues that we possibly can. And also, on the expenditure side, it's just about controlling them and trying to keep them under whatever the tax levy limit is going forward.
And I think the important thing, too, is that capturing savings, trying to share services. You know, we were forced into it the first two years, but I think everybody's in our region is looking up and saying, how can we, how can, how can we? Before they hire somebody else in their office, you know, there's a lot more reaching out and saying, is there a way we can do this, you know, that's palatable and that we can make work? And I think we'll see more and more of that. And I think it's important for us to keep the lines of communication open amongst our districts to make that happen. Any other questions?
And this slide really shows the importance of negotiations and capturing savings through negotiations just because it is just such a huge part of our budget. So, that's something that we're definitely going to focus on. I mean, especially if we want to sustain the programs well into the future.
Thank you for all this. Good work.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'd like to move into the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 5? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? I'd like to get a motion to approve business items 6 through 19.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Can we, is it, can we, discussion?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that is Robert's rules.
Thank you. Did we get a first and a second on that?
Yeah.
Okay, discussion?
Can you just give us a little bit of update on the change orders, Jennifer, on this, please?
Yes, I tried to be as specific as possible by giving the description of each item. This was included on a worksheet, I believe Katie might have sent you, as support for these, for this resolution. But these are items that came up throughout construction. We are actually waiting for a few more, probably two more from SJ Horning regarding the balcony. But these are, I mean, they are fairly self-explanatory why they had to be done. They were found conditions during construction. These are not things that were on anyone's wish list to be added to the project. These were things that if we didn't get them done immediately, then we were holding up the process and we were holding up construction. And what happens is, when construction is held up past the contract date, they can backcharge us on any part of their contract. So, is there any specific item? Because it is broken out about the fireproofing for the boiler room ceiling, the sprinkler piping for the balcony. There was masonry work that had to be done when they removed old roofing. You have here, in the technology area, they found some, they found the wall to be cracked and unstable. So, they had to remove and replace that wall. They had to add, there was a height differential between the corridor ceilings and balcony ceiling, which was greater than anticipated. So, they had to add the soffits in the two balcony exits. Maintaining existing electrical service.
No, no, there was, like, I'm referring to basically, like, on laser. I can't see it right here in front of me. I'm looking at it.
That was a deduct change order. That contract went down.
All right.
The laser change order is a reduction to the contract.
I know, but we went up and then we went down. So...
That was, we went down because instead of paving that pathway over there, you agreed to have it removed and just seated.
Got it. Okay, that's, okay.
So, that's why it cost a little bit because they had to rip out all the old asphalt.
Got it. Okay.
Right.
And then the balcony exits soffit. So...
I mean, they're all kind of little. I don't think...
Was that because the...
I don't think it is either, but the building project's supposed to be finished. We're supposed to have a punch list, which was supposed to be finished, I thought, at Christmas.
We've only gotten one of the, there's four contractors, major contractors. So, only Horning has come through to do it. And we did get delayed because the balcony changed. So, we couldn't do the punch list until the balcony went through. So, Horning went through. Now, we still have to have the electrical. Mike did go on vacation. We let him go for 10 days. He had it pre-prescribed. They are going to go through now. He's returning.
Okay.
But they, I have to have everybody on deck to do those punch lists.
Okay.
So, we're finishing those now.
Okay.
So, you expect the punch list to be, and the project to be completed when?
I never, I never, I've learned never to say that.
What you're saying is, we don't know or have a good idea when it's going to finish.
No, we don't until they come back and do it.
It really is availability.
Unrealistic question.
We did get delayed because of the balcony.
No, no, I understand that.
And Mike thought he would be done by now. So, he had scheduled his vacation with his wife.
And well-deserving. She has to see him once a year.
She does. Gets, and literally is once a year. And so, he had to push off all of the punch lists. So, we literally go through, like, when I went through with Horning, it was our principal, Mr. Nichols, myself, Eric. It was an entire day. And so, we will be scheduling an entire day with HVAC. It'll be an entire day with the electrical. But there's really only four of them to go. And then we'll finish and we give them the list and they either give us charge, you know, charges back or they have to complete it. It's a, it's a...
It's an involved process.
They also don't, they also don't get paid. So, that, we are still holding on to that money until they finish it. But they do, you know, these contractors have moved on to other lands now. And part of it was the timing on this last piece that none of us all had.
Yeah, of course. So, what it's totally done, can you come back to the board at one of these meetings and just update on, you know, here was the original projections of timing and cost and here's what we ended up, just so that we're really transparent?
We are very, very close on that. And if you would, you know, if we'd love to get through this vote and we probably can provide that for you at a board meeting to go through that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, when it's all summed up, just so that people kind of, you know, it's wrapped up and done and they kind of get that report card at the end, which would be great.
I think we could probably look for that in, as part, we'll try and keep it succinct in our March meeting. I think we could probably look for that in, in, as part, we'll try and keep it succinct in our March meeting, so we can really see all of us costs broken out. We wanna get through this February vote, but I think we should be in pretty good shape by then.
Perfect, yeah, that's great.
Does that help with your questions, Cindy?
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Did you say six through eighteen?
Nineteen.
Do you wanna do eighteen?
Yeah, remember, I had, I had asked for nineteen to be separate?
So we'll change it to
Thank you, sorry about that.
Six through eighteen, any other discussion?
Wanna thank the people who made the donations to the Samsung television?
We got an addendum.
Right in front of you.
Yep.
And the baby grand piano?
It was on in a
Yeah, right here.
Addendum, we got the names.
Yep. No, I, I mean, yeah, I'm asking for the public, but it's a formal addendum.
Excellent.
I'm glad you brought that up, John, it's always good to thank people, these are very generous.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So we have Claudio Garcia for the fifty-five inch Samsung television, and we have Maria Ayers for a, a baby grand piano. So, it's pretty cool.
That will be going to Stella Maris.
It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Can I get a motion to approve business item nineteen?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a quick, a quick question about, I know part of the analysis was the cost of each firm, and I know that this firm is not local, it's upstate, right?
Yes, it is.
So
Yeah, and they're a national company as well.
Right, which is great. So, are there additional costs incurred because they're, they're so far away?
Actually, they were, they were the only firm that offered a built-in savings, and I'm gonna tell you how that worked without going through names and numbers, because we spent days and hours.
And thank you for doing that.
So we interviewed four firms, all of them state a fee to, their fee to do the job, and then you have that supplemental soft cost of a construction manager.
Right.
And so, when we do our analysis of our current building project, you're gonna see very quickly that the architect costs to BBS and Savin's costs to be a construction manager are two tremendous things added together. Out of the four we interviewed, everybody needed a construction manager to the tune of anywhere upwards of $270,000, in addition to the fees that they quoted to do the job. This firm, because we are lucky, and I'm gonna say we're lucky, that one of the principals of the firm happens to be a lovely gentleman who loves his children, and they live on Long Island. And also loves his grandchildren, and they live on Long Island. And they are going to allow him to stay with them, and he's passing that savings along to us, which he doesn't have to do. So I drove Jennifer crazy. I called her office twelve times. I have more ca, did anybody see hidden figures this weekend, by the way? If you haven't, go, okay? I have more calculations on the architect's hidden costs, soft costs, and what's buried for these architectural firms than she needed to get the coordinates to bring that space launch back down in the right place. And I can tell you that there are no hidden costs, and they're not passing it along. That was my biggest concern, where they were located, and it has been completely taken off the table.
So, so what I'm hearing, I think, is that there aren't, their costs, transportation costs, hotel costs, whatever, we're not gonna be any more than the other firms that we're evaluating.
Actually, significantly less.
It's a lump sum fee, it includes everything.
Okay, great, thank you, and thank you to everyone who served on that committee. I know it's a tremendous amount of work, and we appreciate the extra time and effort you put into it, so thank you, thank you.
Actually, their educational liaison goes to St. Andrews Church. I, I, I won't bring up the names in public, but they, they have relatives on their paper, so... Just small, this is a very small world. But I also, do I wanna hear anything from, I think every, three out of the four folks sitting there were on the committee, and every, every one of the firms was outstanding, though. I, all the reference checks we did, every, every firm was outstanding.
It was a unanimous decision, this firm, recommendation? That's great, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, can I get, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, we'll move on to personnel, actions twenty through thirty-eight. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Actually, can I say something? I just want to, Mary Adamcheck, who's staying with the district, but will, moving forward shortly, will not be the district clerk, just because there's so much responsibility she has outside of that. I just wanna thank you for your many, many years of absolutely fabulous service supporting the Board of Education and supporting this district. As the district clerk, you've been exceptional, and I just, from the bottom of my heart, wanna thank you.
And for feeding us.
Yes.
Thank you.
For feeding us. You always remember, I should always take good care of us.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, all those opposed? Any abstain? All right, those motions carried, move on to committee reports. Athletic Committee?
The Athletic Committee met, I believe it was last week, and Mr. Nichols and I proposed a new plan for selection of topics moving forward, and the committee seemed to respond pretty well to it. We'll have an update, we have another committee meeting coming up rapidly, so it'll be, in the minutes, will be posted.
Audit Committee didn't meet, Communications Committee?
We got rained out on that.
We got the storm
We got the storm canceled.
Cancelled.
And now you guys are giving us a meeting, so we're gonna get cancelled again.
Right, now we have the BLE meeting.
Community Coalition?
They will be having, hosting their, their Family Feud night, which is, is the same night as, it'll be tomorrow night at Bay Street Theater, and they're inviting all folks to please, please participate, because I don't think people are just gonna be as fascinated by our grass presentation. And I
Does that mean they're not to go?
Somebody's present at the board at tomorrow night at that function, I'll volunteer.
I think board members can step aside from tomorrow night's meeting and go ahead down and press that button. But it will be a really good night for Community Coalition, and I think they really are starting to gain some speed, so I'm really proud of them, so...
That's great. EFC?
The Educational Facilities Planning Committee met on January eleventh, and what we did, we reviewed the three-years building condition survey, and I wouldn't say we reviewed, we evaluated it. We went over the first two years, and we are in the early stages of prioritizing which projects we would like to see go forth and put to the Board of Education. We are waiting a bit to see what happens at the end of this fiscal year, depending on how much money we have, and I'm motioning over to Jennifer, because a lot of it depends on what happens at the end of this year. But we looked at the different lighting systems and rails in the elementary school, as well as the high school, and we have our prioritization and our wish list there. Our next meeting is on February thirteenth, so...
So you guys are gonna share your wish list with the Board of Education?
Well, it's, it's your call, our, our call, really. It's, you know, it's, yeah, we're gonna be making this recommendation.
Actually, our next meeting actually is February fifteenth.
Oh.
And it is actually the same day of the vote, so we'll have everyone come in for the meeting and then hopefully vote.
There you go.
And also, if you do look at the, the budget presentation that we did earlier, we did incorporate some of the recommendations from the EFPC in the budget this year. We did incorporate about a little less than $20,000 worth of repairs to address some of those conditions, mainly related to health and safety. And we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we really did make a lot of, you know, we really did a lot of hard work at the last meeting, and I'm just sorry that the minutes weren't ready to send you for tonight.
No, no, that's fine.
But they'll be ready soon.
Please chime in with anything then.
Jennifer, you had mentioned that you incorporate, which was great, incorporated some of the recommendations of the committee into this budget. Before we, before we get too much further, it would be great for the board to hear what that is, if it's being incorporated in the, in the recommendation, not now.
Yes, right now, we, we discuss funding sources, and of course, one of the funding sources is reserves, another one is operating budget, another one is another bond project. So, we felt since we were doing facilities tonight, we wanted to at least get those in there, and if we need to make cuts later, we will.
And the list that we're working off of was provided to the board, I believe, about a month and a half ago?
No, also last July, was the first time they received it.
Right, we're looking at the same list.
Two times after that.
But, but there's a difference between kind of getting a list and having it be presented and talking about it as a board, so at some future meeting, I think, would be helpful.
Yes, we definitely are gonna bring all the recommendations forward.
Fantastic.
Park Board?
So, just two updates. One, the Park Board has been working with the Athletic Director to help make sure that they're preparing, the park is getting prepared for the spring sports, and that relationship continues to be very good. And then, secondly, a focus on fundraising, because the big initiative is to rebuild the playground in the park. So there's a lot of focus on that, people continue to read about it, and if you're interested in donating to that, you can go onto Mash Park's website, and there's a mechanism there to donate.
Nutrition and Wellness Health and Safety Committee, I think we didn't meet.
We did meet, because I don't have a beef, and I'm not, so we're welcome. Do you have a little activity on Wednesday?
Yes, Wednesday, we have them to the committee, actually, more than Athletic Committee, is probably doing things to move to one of the wellness sound agencies, sponsor events, where we're learning some other deep down districts.
It's like a panel discussion, I believe.
Yeah, that's great.
Nice. Policy Committee?
Oh, yeah.
Also did, had to cancel our meeting, and we'll be meeting again on February eighth.
Wall of Honor?
We have not, we had to reschedule, it looks like we had a date, so we'll be meeting in a couple weeks.
All right, sounds good. Items for discussion, the professional development budget, it came up at the last meeting, and for board members on your desk in front of you, you should have a, is this?
Yeah, everybody has that.
Yep, that's it.
Surrounding districts?
Yeah, it, what it has, what you have in front of you is
Oh, okay.
the school district, and then next to it is the number of board members in that district, because that plays into the budget that they have.
Do you happen to have another one?
You should have
You should have a first.
Yep.
I looked at it.
Okay, thanks. I put one in front of everybody.
You know what, maybe got mixed up with the papers, sorry. I shouldn't have another one. Oh, I see where this is, okay.
And then it has the, the actual size of the budget, corresponding budget, conference budget for each, for each district, and then the conference budget per, per member, because some districts have three members, some districts have five, some districts have seven. And then it has what the total percentage is, let me set back my mind.
No, that's fine. It's fine, where are the top three?
And I actually received a response from Maria Smith after I sent this out to everyone over at Southampton. And she sent me her information, which I wasn't able to include in this, and I'm trying to look for it now. But it was actually on the higher side, so that was just to let you know.
I think it's more challenging the further east you go, because transportation increases.
Okay, so...
The reason it came up is that when she was going through the budget for the board, a couple of things came up. One is that we are getting very close to the end of the budget, and there's still some professional development that board members wanted to attend. And so, I just wanted to bring it up, because we didn't have a full conversation around, in the past, when events came up, we, we just kind of signed up and went if we wanted to go. And so this year, we've gotten close to the end of the budget, so I just wanted the board to weigh in on how they wanted to proceed moving forward, and if, and to get some insight as to what happens if we go over budget, and those sorts of things, and just get some feedback from the board.
I don't think we should go over budget, I don't think that's a good way to run a budget. In the past, and this is a couple, several years ago, we used to have conversations as a board before we had expenditures, with the exception of new board member training and new officer training. Those were the two things that you're kind of required by law to do, do once, but do. And then, beyond that, everything else we would talk about ahead of time, because we have a fixed amount of money, and you wanna proactively plan. If you have board members just signing up and doing, you get to the situation that we're in now, where we, or kind of may run out of money and still have things we wanna do. So I would advocate that we are more responsible and proactively manage the budget, and that we shouldn't go over it. That being said, I'm a huge advocate for training. What I've done a lot of this year is get training for free. If you do a webinar that's live, it's a minimal cost. If you go back and watch it afterwards and listen, and they all have presentations, it costs the taxpayers zero.
Zero.
So, the majority of things that, that people may sign up for, not all, but a lot of them can be at no cost to the taxpayer, so if we're running out of money, I think then, you know, we have to be responsible and not just say, well, we'll just take out of mom's wallet, but that we manage to our budget, and then work more responsibly next year to proactively plan.
And we haven't, we haven't done that since I've been on the board, I know you guys have been on the board longer, but since I've been on the board, Mary's just sent out an email and said, does anybody wanna go to this conference? And if people did, they did. And if they, I mean, it never came before the board, I just wanted to bring it up, because as we get to the end, do we just say, no more training from here on out, because we're out of money, or?
Well, it's not no more training, it's no more paid training, it's tons of training at no cost.
I, I understand, I'd like to hear.
So, I have a couple of questions here. Jennifer, the document that you sent out to us, because this has been a conversation among the board, and an appropriate one, we have $204 left in, in the budget, right? That does not include the second retreat that we, we had, right? We were not charged for that?
I don't, you don't have that one in front of you?
No, no, this is one that was sent to us. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to quiz you on, on a line.
I know, I should've brought all that stuff with me, sorry.
I think the last, the last one that we had, there was no cost, because she got stuck in traffic.
That's right, she was late, and, and so we, okay.
But I think that it did go through, it did get billed, but I thought we were supposed to, I think it, I think she did, the, I think NISMA did, I think New York State School Boards did bill us incorrectly, and then it was supposed to be taken back off, so that's why I'm not sure if that's showing correctly or not, because that was, that would be my question, and we don't, I don't
Does it make sense till, till, if we're gonna have an upcoming meeting where we have, I think, one, either the next meeting or a meeting after, we're gonna have a board, and if we could have those numbers in front of us, it may make sense to wait, so we can actually look at it and
But I, I, I'm sorry, Chris, is there something that someone wants to attend before the next board meeting?
There is.
I thought there was.
And yeah, this is the Capitol Conference, for the past two years, I've been going up to Albany to go to what is called the Capitol Conference. And the conference itself is no charge. We're members of NISMA, and, NISMA, rather, and the only charge would be is, is being in Albany for a night. This is part of the legislative advocacy branch of NISMA, and school board members from all over the state, nine hundred and thirty-two districts, go to Albany. I wish we had nine hundred and thirty-two people, but we actually get about three hundred, two hundred and fifty to three hundred. And what we do is, we lobby our, our elected representatives. And we ask for a variety of things. Now, NISMA has, they have their legislative priorities, you can see them, you're all on, on NISMA. I'll go through them with you, with you, if you'd like, but, you know, that, that is what we do. Do you want me to explain Albany a little bit, like how that?
I went to school there, I know where it is.
So, in other words, what you're saying is that, so we can keep this moving.
Yeah.
Jennifer will have to quickly research for us whether the $204 out of the $5,000 budget is realistic, or perhaps we were invoiced for a board retreat that we are due a credit, which might substantially increase our $204 balance. So let's make believe for one minute, which Jennifer will confirm, that there might be $1,204 left. With that said, you need transportation and a hotel room for a night?
Right.
What did it cost last, last year, what did it cost, so we have a sense of
Well, this year, the hotel room where they have us, it's, I think, $229.
Okay, so
So the total with transportation, there's no per diem for food, right?
I don't know, there's a mileage calculation, and I really don't know the mileage calculation from here to Albany.
Three hundred.
$380?
Hotel and mileage.
And there's, there's no, is there a per diem for food that's added to that?
It's an overnight stay, $50.
Per day, so we're looking at four fifty, four eighty total you're talking about?
And that's why we accepted your resignation with regret, because you just shot those numbers off like the And that's why we accepted your resignation with regret, because you just shot those numbers off like the best district clerk ever had.
So between, you're talking between four fifty and five hundred, is what it sounds like?
No, it's probably around four hundred.
Okay, four hundred dollars, and that includes?
All total.
All total, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so assuming that, is there someone else that wants to attend something?
No, but here's the question, though, here's the question, it's January, you've got February, March, April, May, June, you have five, we have five more months, so you're gonna deplete the total account.
We have to know what the real numbers are.
What anybody else, I mean, I do, I do, I do, I only do the law, I've done the law every year, Mary will vouch, I do the law every year, for as long as I've been on the board, just to stay updated with the law. So that's my one conference I do, and then the rest I do, I do webinars also, so.
And we did that one, so that's.
I do, I, I'm done.
Yep, that's done.
I did my one, and done, exactly, so I don't know if Teresa wants to do anything, or, I don't, I mean, I don't know, so.
That's why.
I'd like to pitch that, that this one is particularly important right now, the governor has, has put his educational runs out, and in the next couple of months, he is going to add to it, or he's going to keep it the same. Now, there was an article in Twenty Seven East, our, our state aid is flat.
Our state aid has been flat for a hundred years. I mean, we get like two percent, five percent at the most.
Going up, there's not gonna be.
It's not gonna get us any more money, well, listen.
Going up last year, we got an extra thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, look, it, I, I get it, um, what this does, it helps NISMA in their ability to negotiate. If they say, we had two hundred and ninety elected officials who are volunteers from around the state who came, because they were that passionate about more money for education and programs, it gives them leverage.
We got that, Chris, and do you anticipate, Diana, I'm sorry, I'm running, I, I would rather group canal without no became, than have to go to another meeting. So, I, I, I don't anticipate doing anything between now and the end of our educational year.
I don't.
Okay. Assuming the money's there, Chris, do you have anything on your radar?
He, here's my suggestion, because we have two people that we don't know if they are wanting to go to anything, I think what we need to do, because we're, we're, we're trying to answer questions without full information, and I want to thank Tommy John for going the past two years. I think most people do want, not, do not want to give another two days a night and travel that far to do it, no matter how passionate they are about it, so thank you, and I really appreciate it, and I know that being there does some good, so it's not like it doesn't, it's more just trying to be fiscally responsible and manage to the budget, which this year we didn't do well, is. If we can, if we can get an update on what we really have, and secondly, a list of what the conferences are to the end of the year, and just email, survey the board, so that the people who aren't here can answer, and we can look at it, it's hard for me to say, I know what I want to do, if something hasn't been sent to us yet, and it's in May, that I would really want to do.
I, I'm asking historically, because you've been on the board for twelve years, that maybe there's something specific.
Yes, I have got, yes. I have not, this is my seventh year, but it does feel like twelve, but, uh, during the course of those years, I've been, I've been to the law ones, I've been to, I, I've been to a series of different ones, uh, that were not offered online, that were, um, so I have been to them before, but I don't know what's now till the end of the year, so I can't answer that question.
Okay, when do you need to know by?
Uh, the conferences, uh, February twelfth and thirteenth.
So we can do this via email, I think, at least to get a list of what it is, get the actual budget, and say, here's what I'd like to do, and if it's gonna exceed the budget, then we'll have to make some decisions as a board at the next meeting.
But I think that five thousand dollars is, is, is a sufficient line item for us for, for professional development, I think we should stay in it, where, where.
I think it's too high, but that's in next year's budget.
Well, well, I know, well, again, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you're looking at the line, and we only have two hundred dollars left, so it's like, at some point, you gotta pick the ones you want to go to, and then the rest you're gonna, we gotta figure out on your own, that's what I'm saying.
Unfortunately, they went to Darcy, it didn't go to training. That's where the bulk of this money went.
I said no to those two.
Right.
But we're the second, second largest budget out of all these schools.
So it's the second largest budget, regardless of our enrollment. Exactly.
Hang, hang on, Katie, you want me in?
I do think what drives that is how far away we are from everything, like, and, and that has a big driver, um, just.
And Southampton is actually six thousand, and they have seven members.
Is that what it is?
They have six thousand Southampton, so their average per member is eight fifty-seven. And you do have money in your contractual line that you did not spend this year, if you did have to do, if you did want to increase your conference line, you could.
No, we don't, what's there, what's Southampton's budget?
Um, Southampton's budget is larger than ours, but they have the same number of members.
Yeah.
So they're going to the same conferences, so.
So am I correct, correct in assuming, one of two things, as far as the, uh, second retreat that we did have but weren't charged, maybe we were charged, and there's plenty of money in the budget. Or if we, if we were not charged, then the board was willing to spend an extra, what is it, twelve hundred dollars, or fourteen?
It's more like two thousand.
More like two thousand dollars, so, uh, what are we saying?
I guess we're saying that we're, we're gonna send out it, we're gonna get the information, we're gonna send out to the board to make sure that.
I'm sorry, I didn't have it today, I had a lot of stuff to do today.
No worries, no worries.
But I definitely will do it tomorrow, and I'll let you know if they are.
We have email. That's fine, we're gonna be at email.
No, I, I think, I think Tommy John's point is that we had been trying to schedule another retreat, which would have put us well over the budget.
But we hadn't seen, the last time we had talked about together a retreat.
Chris has asked three times.
We didn't have this, we just got this information recently, I've been asking for months to have this conversation.
Yeah, she's been asking for a while for this.
Because I'm a big believer in training, but I'm also a big believer in being responsible and managing to the budget, so if, if we get this information in the next day or two, we can get feedback, and then we can make an informed decision. I can't make an informed decision if I don't know where the budget is, and I don't know what else is on the docket as a choice. And we have two of the seven people here who can't weigh in on what they want to go to. We don't have all the information necessary to make an informed decision.
Does the board support legislative advocacy?
Tommy John, that's uneven, that's.
That's what?
I do want to add one more thing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I did receive an email from a taxpayer who actually asked if we were having someone go up and represent us, and they were saying that they really hoped we were having someone to go up to represent us, so, and that was before this topic even came out, so I'm just letting you know that.
And then gave us a list of things that we should discuss.
Exactly.
So tomorrow, if we find out we have two hundred and four dollars left, what are we gonna tell Tommy John? Sorry, you can't go, because he'll go over the budget.
Two hundred and four dollars, and he, I mean.
Hold on, it's not just that.
It's not, it's not our money.
It's not, this is not our money.
I'm not concerned about that, I'm assuming that we have twelve hundred and two dollars. You guys want to ask Teresa and Susan if they want to go to something, because they're not here to answer. In the meantime, his conference will come and go, and we'll let them go to something, do you see why we're, we're not being fair here?
It's not even February first.
Right, we have the, it, we have, I, I'm assuming it's not gonna take more than a couple days to get the list of what the real budget status is, and the list of things that are on the docket for training between now and the end of the year. It's not an issue.
And hypothetically, so it's just, I'm just saying.
And then we can weigh in, I'm not gonna weigh in on a hypothetical, we don't have the information, you have to make a decision.
If this is, if this is the budget, is the, the will of the board that we don't go over, and so unless, uh, unless a conference comes in under the two hundred and fifty dollars that we have left, we leave it.
If we have a bank account, and there's two hundred dollars, can you pay a check with, for five hundred out of that account? No, you can't, so it's, you know, do you want, listen, if he wants to go, let him go.
Jennifer?
Well, you know, I, I mean, I don't have the information to make a decision.
If you have a savings account, you live in Psych Harbor, sometimes you don't have one of those.
So there, I don't see any downside into getting information the next day or two, and then weighing in, and also, being respectful to my colleagues, and seeing if there's anything on that list they want to go to.
Can I ask a question, if there's two thousand dollars left in that account?
Don't care, I, I, I'm done.
With it then?
I need to, I don't know what other people want to do on the board, I need the information.
Have they brought anything?
Look, all abstained, you can run it off same.
It's something, Chris, that Susan really wants to go to, what deems that more important than Tommy John going to what he wants to go to? That's my point, I don't know where you're going here. He's saying, this is what I would like to go to, I understand there might not be any money, so maybe tomorrow, after we find out exactly how much money we have, and it's all hypothetical. We have twelve hundred dollars, now you're gonna stall it more, because we're gonna ask two people, which we can certainly do, what they would like to out of a list of, that we're gonna have to dig up from somewhere, of events from now to then. What, what makes the Nutrition Wellness, I'm making it up, meeting in Albany more important than the legislative meeting in Albany? Who gets to decide that? I don't have the answer to that.
When we, and again, you're right, it predates a year and a half ago, you've been on the board a year and a half?
Three years.
Three years, then it must predate three years, this is your third year, right? Yeah, so three years. The, um, um, as a board, we, we used to make those decisions, I'm not trying to stall anything, again, I've asked for this for months.
Yep.
I've been the, so I have been the one to say, can we sit down and go through this, because I didn't want to be in this position, where it is so late, and now I'm being pressured, feels a little like bullying, actually, to try to make a decision when I don't feel like I have enough information. I answer to the taxpayers of this community, and when I get the information where I'm informed that I make a decision that I know is fact-based, then I can weigh in on it. I would like him to go, but I also don't know what these guys want to do, I don't know if there's something in May that I want to do, and, uh, so we, as a board, have to talk about, how do we make those decisions? Do we look at how much money each one has been allocated to them this year, and say, well, then if someone hasn't spent any money yet on a conference, they get a priority, I don't know, but that's a conversation we're supposed to have, that we can't have right now. So if we can get the information the next day or two, I will respond immediately when I get the information.
But we'll respond in, in answer to what the numbers say, that will not get us anywhere. If there's no money there, there's no money there, then Tommy John will have to take it out of his pocket if he wants to attend, because we're not going over budget. If there is money there, that answers the fiscal conservative, I answered to the taxpayers' question, but that doesn't answer the, who gets to go to a seminar.
But it might do that.
Does, does, does daughter get to go to the movies, and son gets to go skiing if I have extra money left over? Who gets to decide that?
Let's say, let's say there's a thou, I'm gonna make up numbers just to talk.
Tom's are getting really, really, really high here.
I am, because I think we're, we're being ridiculous.
How many conferences have you gone to this year?
None.
Okay, so then you would be up first, how many conferences did you go to this year, two?
Hmm, one.
Well, you went to officer's training.
Okay.
Right, two, how many have you gone to?
I've gone to three.
Okay, how many have you gone to?
I've just done online this year.
Okay, so, um, I've gone to one, so I would say the person who hasn't gone has first rights to go to educate themselves, that's how I would treat my children. So I would try to be fair, so I would want everybody to go to get educated, not just one or two board members, if that's what they want to do.
Okay, to date, or right now, I'm the only board member who asked to do something this spring, and, and we've kind of had this in front of us for a month or more, and no one has said anything. Now, look, if, I mean, if this is a huge issue, I don't need to go to Albany, and, you know, fight for legislation to get more money for school districts, and to ask for a tax cap not based on the Consumer Price Index, on something real, because that's what we do, and we sit across the table, and we look at them, and you know what? We have great advocates in Albany, but, okay, so what, so what I'm saying is, even if we have the money, you, you still wouldn't allow this.
That's not what I said at all, I, you keep, you keep making a statement.
You would want to prioritize this.
You know, I've been on the right foot of what I said.
Go to Albany, I'm good.
I've been on the.
Turn the money, I'm good.
I've, I've, I'm good. But that is not what I said at all, so.
Well, I feel bad.
Is there a way to give us the financial answer to the question prior, don't we have the six o'clock meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Is that an executive session at six o'clock tomorrow?
You can go in, uh, public.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we can ask Mary to send us the list of the conferences scheduled, so we can go into that meeting.
Okay, is there any way to do that by tomorrow at six o'clock, so we know?
Yep.
Okay, that's great, but that will still not get an answer, because in all fairness to Susan and Teresa, they would need to be forwarded a list of conferences.
They can.
Available for them to attend between tomorrow and June thirtieth.
And I personally feel like if, if a board member wants to look into getting, because Sandy just said that she's not interested in any of the conferences.
Nope, I'm good.
Nor am I, so I don't want Mary to spend an hour trying to find conferences, if there's something that you find that you like, and we'll extend the invitation to the others, and if they, there's something they want to attend, but I would put the, that burden of labor on, on the board member that wants to attend it, and not ask Mary to come up with exhaustive list of.
Mary has sent us stuff all the time, she can get it from NISMA.
That's on that website.
Yeah, she can just pull it from the website and email us, to expedite the process, and it's not an investigative process.
And board members can look. It's very clear, the board members can look, there's events and conferences.
Um, is there anything under old business? I don't think so. Public input two?
Because they charge the podium.
Alright, can I get a motion to? Hang on, I haven't even found the part yet. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting by, and a second?
So much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you administrators, thank you.
Yes, thank you for staying.
See you tomorrow.